Lose the auditorium. The other would be the turf. And the third one would be the second principal's office. People who are involved in education tell me that they've never heard of two principals on the one roof, so I don't know what the situation is. But all three of those are non-reimbursable items. So I assume that it wouldn't affect the reimbursement dollar amount. And it would just come off the top and lower the what each town is assessed presumably.
Vida, you understand that principal salaries are not capital. So taking the principals out of the equation.
No, their offices. I'm talking about their office space.
Oh.
Yeah, no. Principals offices, I thought I said offices. That's that. Okay. The second thing is that in yesterday's packet at the school committee, there was a letter from MSBA to Carol Woodbury about a statement of interest with regard to be resubmitted if they're still so inclined to with regard to ME Small. And there's a sentence in there which kind of aroused my interest. And it says, "If the district is planning to submit an SOI in 2020, consider notifying local governing boards of your intentions, as local governing bodies will have to vote to approve submissions." So I asked, I said, "Well, what does this exactly mean?" Because back in early January, February, when they were, there was an agenda on the item to submit this SOI for this current year, I guess it was. When that came up, the chair, Jenny Landers, looked over at the superintendent and asked her if she had ever consulted this board about that ME Small project. And I don't remember, she mumbled something, I don't know. So I was asking her the same question. What is she, and finally, she just, I guess I finally said, "What do they mean by boards and what have you?" And she said, "Well, it means the school committee." Well, not probably with regard to ME Small, because that's a school that we are totally responsible for, aren't we?
Yes.
In terms of capital and everything?
Yes.
So I would think that you people should have been the ones voting on whether or not to submit. She should have come in here. I mean, Tracy, I think, made a start of asking her to keep you apprised of what's going on, what she's proposing and what have you with regard to this school building. And I just, I don't understand, you know, how she just plows along and you are the people who are supposed to be making these decisions. I mean, you have to know what she has in mind for that school, whether she wants a new building, whether she, she has never said anything to you, has she? So I called the MSBA today and had a hard time getting somebody to, you know, to talk to me. And in the final analysis, that person said, well, I was asking her to, what was, what was the intention of those two men who signed the letter? And while she wasn't sure about it, but what have you, in the final analysis, she decided that it had something to do with the local bylaws or the district agreement or what have you. And the district agreement does spell out that it is the responsibility of this board, that particular school. So I don't know where. And I have a question, I guess, for Jeff. Does water metering replacement, that's not for the whole town, is it?
I'm going to make a presentation in a moment. I think I'll answer your questions.
Well, okay. Because my water meter was replaced, you know, less than 10 years ago, I know that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mike, I have a question.
Go ahead. Norm.
Dan, with regard to ME Small, does the DY District have a lease on that building from the town of Yarmouth?
So all the leases are expired, and they've been expired for some time.
So does the school district have a legal right to request modifications to a building that it doesn't even have a lease on?
Well, I think that's more of a local jurisdictional issue. My understanding is in a regional school district, the school committee makes that decision to advance the SOI. I would caution the board, though, that we're not going to get any money for ME Small until Mattakeye's building is over the finish line. That's, they don't issue more than one SOI at one time typically on projects like that. So they keep submitting it so that it stays in the queue with the idea that someday, somewhere down the line, maybe three to five years from now, it would be in line for funding. But by that time, the school committee might decide that there's some other plan for ME Small. And I think it's probably worthy of a conversation we should have with the superintendent as it relates to the long-term plan, because a lot of things were discussed along the way over the last two years about what we should do in the future. So that's certainly something I can work with the school administration and have them present what their ideas are on that topic.
I requested just that last night.
The other issue should be 2020 also, to get the lease agreements in order. They, the documentation that I had reviewed before indicated it was pretty close to in 2016 to getting over the finish line, just didn't quite get finished off. And I don't think it's a huge lift to get there, but I think that's something we can certainly work with the administration on to get that done in 2020.
Kurt. Just to clarify, we're not cutting money off the budget. We have to cut the project to meet the existing budget.
Correct.
So just so it's clear, not $5 million isn't going away. We're just, that's the inflation that's happened in the interim when we thought we were going to start to now.
We had similar items when we built the park over here at Old Townhouse. They call them alternative bid items. So in other words, you put your proposal forward and you were going to get this and this and this if you came within a certain budget. If you didn't, then those things were going to be dropped.
And, you know, there's a lot of discussion in the community about the auditorium. And the auditorium was, I think, by most people's feeling in the committee, was for the benefit of the community, not so much the school. So that's more of a hurt on the town than it is on the school, in my opinion. But it may go away still, depends on what the money comes out to be. The other issues I had is the Breakfast Club is still in business and nobody seems to know why. And there's some questions about the bog on White Rock Road and Union Street and that people are saying that the water underneath the bog is polluted. And I'd like to know if that's true. And if so, how come nobody seems to know that? And maybe it's not true, but just to, I think it would be nice to clarify that in public.
Can you tell me about, I don't know anything about what you're talking about, about the Breakfast Club?
The Breakfast Club is some town employees that spend at least an hour in a coffee shop almost every morning.
Oh. I thought it was a business.
I don't know what kind of business it is, but so. And then there's another issue of what's on the maps is a town way to water on Mayflower Terrace. And apparently, the people in that area have asked the town to do something about having that access, and the town doesn't want to do it because it's too much work. At least, that's what they've told me, they've been told. So I think the town should work for the convenience of the residents and not the convenience of the staff. That's it for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Kurt. For people who may not know him, I think everybody does, but out there, that was Kurt Anyone else? Okay, what we're going to do is skip ahead, Phil Goddard is here, our town clerk, to talk about ballot placement on annual, on annual town elections.
Is that written here?
Yeah, it was a one-page memo. I'll summarize it. It's very, oh, Phil's got copies? Okay. Skip me, I got one. This memo, for the public's benefit, dealt with ballot question deadlines. And it says, "Local ballot questions may only be placed on ballots for the annual town election, a special town election, or the presidential election, which is November 3rd. They cannot be placed on March primary or September primary elections. The Board of Selectmen must give the clerk's office 35 days' notice to print the ballots." As required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 54, Section 24(c), Tuesday, April 14, 2020 is the last day, the Board of Selectmen may sign the annual town meeting election warrant and place a ballot question on the ballot." So that would be for May, right? For the May ballot?
Correct, yeah.
To place a local ballot question, Prop. 2 1/2, the Secretary of the Commonwealth Elections Division must be notified by the first Wednesday in August. The town must send notice of the Board of Selectmen vote to place the ballot question on the November 3 state election before August 5, 2020. Only one local ballot question may be placed on the ballot.
So that's, yeah, so that's for the presidential election. So in talking with Dan and administration, looks like there might be multiple questions that could go on the ballot for the annual town election. So just wanted to let you know that we'll have a deadline for the annual town election, which is the April 14, to get those ballot questions on the ballot. However, we have another option is to put, you can put, towns are allowed a local option to put a Prop. 2 1/2 question on the president, for the, on the presidential election ballot. And so that deadline is August 5, or we have to notify the Elections Division before August 5. So that's just another option we wanted to make you aware of for those.
But there can only be one on the November 1 local town?
Correct.
Question?
Yes.
Okay. But you could have multiple ones on the town election cycle?
Correct, yeah. So that's what, really just wanted to let you know.
Those are the deadline. No, it's important information. Anybody have any questions or comments on that?
Thank you.
One question.
Sure.
And thanks for the update. You said it had to be 2 1/2 related, so.
Dead exclusion as well.
Dead exclusion would be an eligible item to.
Yes, correct.
That's a good question. He said Prop. 2 1/2 in the memo, but it's either that or dead exclusion.
Or dead exclusion, correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Good question, Mark. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Phil.
You're welcome. Thanks.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting. Nice to try, no?
If you're feeling spellbound, don't apologize for it. All right. Water department update.
Jeff Colby, Public Works Director, here to give you a water department update. In your packets is a memo I prepared. It was very similar to the last couple of updates that I've given you relative to activities within the water division. I'll highlight a few of those. But on your agenda, there were two items under water department update that were items I want to make sure that I touch upon. One is listed as water meter replacement project. That's in the memo that I submitted to you under a slightly different description, and that is water, that is the meter pit safety upgrades. This is a project I'll highlight as I go through the project updates for you, but it's an important safety enhancement for the worker's safety. And given that there's OSHA safety requirements that we're now complying with, I think that'll be an important topic. It's a very limited number of meter pits that are being placed to minimize confined space entry for employee access. And I will elaborate a little bit when we get there. And the other item that'll wrap up the presentation with is the water wastewater superintendent position. Like to talk with you about recommendation in that regard. So just to go through the memo in your packet, highlighting some of the big topics, I like to start out these update memos to you with some budget information. We have submitted the 2021 budget submission to town administration. I think you're going to hear a little bit more about the overall budget a little bit later tonight. But just to highlight as it relates to water is that's just under $4 million proposed budget, which is a slight reduction from the 2020 budget. Revenue has also slightly exceeded where we were last time at this year. We've brought in $2,721,000 already to date for this fiscal year. So it's doing very well in that regard. As far as water pumped, that's something I'd like to cover for you. As you know, that the summer months are typically our heaviest water months, and so I've got some statistics in your update in that regard. And just as, throw some numbers out there, 895 million gallons of water was pumped in our four heaviest water usage months of June, July, August, and September. And that is an increase over the 2018 period and probably is the reason why our revenues have slightly exceeded last year's. As far as water quality, I know that's always an important topic to update the board on. We have done some recent testing as required for lead and copper, as well as emerging contaminants this summer. Last time I was here, I indicated that we were beginning that process. That process has been completed. The results were remarkably good. The tests came back as either non-detect, no measurable amounts, or far below any kind of action levels with regards to all of the testing that was done within our wells, as well as some of that testing particularly related to lead and copper is actually out in individual homes as well as schools. And so our results are very good. That's something I'm very pleased to report to you. Just an update on well number nine, which has been offline for a number of years related to PCE contaminants. As I mentioned in previous updates, we've done a monitor well network around that to try to identify the plume and see if it's moving. We have tested that. We anticipated testing it quarterly, and it's come that there's only been one, in one of the monitor wells, only a slight amount of PCEs was detected. We feel that that's a very good sign. We'll continue to monitor that, maybe not as frequently as quarterly, maybe more on an annual basis, because that does seem to be decreasing, and that's a good sign. We want to make sure there's no PCEs before we bring that back online. So that's something we'll continue to monitor. But in that regard, because it is just south of a more industrial area, which could be the reason why there is some contaminants in that well, we're also going to test that well for PFOS, which has been a very hot topic of discussion recently. And we think it's appropriate, given the location of that well and some of the other activities in that area, to test for that. And I will update the board when we get those results back. And hopefully, we'll also be pleasantly surprised, but I think our water team feels that that's an appropriate step, given the past history and water quality with that particular well. As far as the projects, we've got a number of them I wanted to update you on. The first one on the list here is the master plan. That is currently in the final stages of being developed. I expect a rough draft within the next couple of weeks. I'll make sure I submit that to the town administrator and the board for your review. There's a number of recommendations that are going to be in that document relative to future water supply planning, recommendations to address contaminants of emerging concern and PFOS, things of that nature. And we'll take steps appropriately once we receive that draft. And what the experts recommend is how to best address some of those upcoming challenges with regards to the water system and particularly water quality. Also very timely, we've embarked on a water rate study with tie and bond. I do expect the results of that to be available in the next couple of months. But as we talk with the board through this budget cycle about a potential water resource enterprise fund and looking at cost recovery and some other capital projects, it'd be very timely to take a look at that water rates and what we might be able to do with those to cover some of those potential costs. And that information will be available for us shortly as we go through the budget process. So that'll be very helpful. Also hydrant maintenance was continued this year. Our target, as I've mentioned before, is approximately 20% of the hydrants to be maintained and properly painted. And that target was nearly hit this year, which is good. So we're making good progress in the last couple of years. We do expect it'll be a couple more years before every hydrant is addressed. But given the number of hydrants we have in the system, that will take some time to make sure those are completely maintained and painted. And then we'll continue that cycle as we go forward. As far as valve exercising and flushing, I do want to report that the low-pressure flushing in critical areas was completed this year. We are also embarking on a process called ice pigging. I refer to it in this update here as just an innovative ice process, but that's a process where we will take ice and look to scour water mains in selected areas to thoroughly clean them. And that is a process that is ongoing, and we will be making some good strides in this winter as we're in a slower water usage period. That's a good time to do that process. And so that is an initiative that the water staff is taking on, and it's something that has been used in other communities, primarily done by contracts. And in doing this effort in-house, we'll save money in doing that in cleaning process. So we're excited to see the results of that. Another capital project that we're embarking on is the pump station improvements. We have a older network of 24 pump stations, primarily out of the '40s, '50s, early '60s. In these particular pump stations, there are a number of confined spaces below the floor surface that are required in order to operate valves and things of that nature. So this particular project will look to mitigate those confined spaces, typically putting bulkheads on the exterior so that there's no need to do a confined space entry from within the building. There's also some door replacement, trim replacement, roof replacements that are all part of that project. That's envisioned as a three-phase project, and we will be bidding out Phase 1, which we have secured the funding for in the last two capital cycles in the March of this upcoming year. So that's something we're excited about. We've also requested funding in the FY '21 capital plan for Phase 2. So that's a good project that's moving along. Anticipated to be about a $4.5 million project, so we're excited to see that underway. And this is the next item, the meter pit safety upgrades is really what's referenced in the agenda that you have. And that is about 60 residential water meters, which are right now within crawl spaces of homes, very difficult to get to if you can envision a home, you know, roughly the size of, you know, half of this room with just a crawl space and water staff having to crawl on hands and knees from one side to the other to check a water meter. That's a confined space challenge and issue. So we're looking to engineer those out and put meter pits on the exterior of the homes on approximately 60 residential properties. And so those will address those confined space issues, and we won't have to have staff in those particular significant challenging locations in the future. That is also being done with town staff in-house, and so we expect that will save significant dollars versus having to have a contractor come in and place all 60 of those. We'll do those in-house. We've done approximately five so far, and so we'll continue to make progress over the next year or two to make sure those are eliminated. Also, an update on the SCADA upgrade that has been completed for pump stations 21 and 22. And we're now developing the scope of services and a budget for, that's really our pilot, those two locations. So we're developing a scope of services and a budget for the remaining pump stations to upgrade our SCADA system, which is the computer system that runs the water, that the operators use to manage pump levels and water levels and chemical feed and all of that kind of thing. That's approximately a 12-year-old system, so just like any computer system, it's about time to upgrade that, especially of that age. Sandy Pond tank, we're in the process of preparing plans and bid specifications for the exterior cleaning and touch-up painting. That's the very next tank in our cycle. We have three tanks, and this is the one that's up next. So we're excited to get that project underway, and that should be completed in 2020 as well. Doing some leak detection and documentation, again, the general manager from Weston to Sampson we have on board has been upgrading a lot of our policies and safety plans, and one of the projects that he's finishing up that we can tick off the list is the leak detection and documentation. Also working on some fence upgrades and security upgrades related to some of our water facilities as well. Another project I'd like to highlight is the well redevelopment, and we do four or five wells. This is proactive preventive maintenance with regards to cleaning the wells and making sure that we get good productivity and water quality out of our wells. And this year, we are planning to do wells number 1, 2, 3, 10, and 11. So our target is to hit five of those wells and extend the life of those wells by the redevelopment process. Also, the last couple items on your list here, we're also continuing to look at the Comquid Heights Water Service and the costs associated with providing Yarmouth water to that location. That should be a component under the master plan, but I wanted to call that out separately since I know the board was interested in that topic. We'll have numbers on that shortly. And the utility cloud, which is our information system for Public Works. We're working with IT staff to continue to roll out phases of that, and our next phase will be work orders. Just want to highlight a couple of projects that were completed this year, and that's the next section, the meter reprogramming. I know I mentioned this previously, but about 9,000 water meters needed to be reprogrammed by water staff, and that was accomplished this past year about the Labor Day timeframe. But they had to individually go to each one of those meters in order to prepare for a software upgrade, and that has been completed. So that was a significant savings as well. Also submitted the CIP plan, which it's listed here as five-year, but there are some items which exceed $1 million that were projected out for the 10-year plan as well, and that has been submitted. And just to, as I mentioned before, with the well redevelopment, just to remind the board that it's been completed for this year, and wells 15, 19, 22, and 23 were redeveloped this current year. So we're continuing to make that progress with four or five wells being done each year. And of course, the Sandy Pond tank now is ready for the next stage of it, because there was a vent repair on the top of the tank that needed to be completed, and that was done this year as well. Other updates are customer service improvements. We have had significant turnover in water staff, particularly at the administrative level. And we now are in the process of interviewing another candidate for customer service supervisor. And once that position's filled, we'll be up to full strength in that regard, and we expect that we'll have significant improvements in customer service. As far as outsourcing and management, we have that general manager contract that I referred to earlier, and the board is aware of. That's been extended through March 31 of 2020. We had the ability to go up to a year. We decided to do six months with an opportunity to potentially extend it for another six months if necessary. But that really feeds into the recommendation I want to talk about in a moment, which is filling the water wastewater superintendent position. So we decided to do six months and see if we can move forward with filling a superintendent position and then not having to continue that for the next six months. As far as job description updates and licenses, we have two job descriptions, one for a water technician, two and three, that have been adjusted slightly to reflect proper DEP water license requirements. And that will be before the personnel board on January 15. Now, as far as the recommendation that I referred to earlier, a key division head-level position is the water superintendent. And the recommendation I'm making to the board, certainly in your capacity as water commissioners and in selectmen, is that we modify that position to have a water wastewater superintendent. At this time, where we're talking about wastewater needs within the community, I think this would be an appropriate time to bring someone with that experience onboard, not just in water, but also in wastewater. There are other communities that have done something similar. Harwich is one. They have, when their water superintendent retired, they brought in a water wastewater superintendent to provide some operational expertise in that regard. Foxborough, as well as a few other communities off Cape, have also done something similar in bringing some responsibilities under that position. And again, that person that we would bring on if the board agrees with this recommendation would have some experiences operationally they could bring to the team as we talk about wastewater. So that is a brief update for the board. And again, the recommendation that I'm looking for hopeful approval from the board tonight is with regards to tweaking the water superintendent position to include wastewater responsibilities as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Tracy.
That's a big job, water and wastewater superintendent. What is that in terms of preparing that for your budget, based on what we had with the contract, what's available? And how difficult is it to find somebody with those expertise together? What are the, what would the requirements be?
The requirements would be experience in both water and wastewater. The requirements could be anywhere from having a water license and a wastewater license, which our general manager currently does. He's not a candidate for the position, by the way, but he does have those. There are a fair number of people that are utility-minded that have both. There's also people that frankly just want to do water or just want to do wastewater and don't have both licenses. But I'm aware of a fair number within the Cape community that have both. They wouldn't necessarily have to have the highest licenses in each category. That's a pretty big ask. Currently. Currently, Yarmouth water is a D4, distribution four license, which is a fairly high license, and a T1 license for drinking water. And then for wastewater, we're a grade six license for wastewater for our septicage facility. So finding someone that has those highest level of licenses would probably not be the direction we'd be looking to go, but certainly experience in both would be helpful. Experience could also be demonstrated by being a professional engineer with experience in both. In chat, and we had a water wastewater superintendent for a long time, and that was an individual that had experience in both and was also a professional engineer that brought that experience to the table. We also do have, like I said, I'm familiar with a few people that have both licenses, so it just shows experience in both areas.
Yeah, this seems similar to me, like when we hired our last EPW director, we had a whole conversation whether or not we wanted a generalist or a specialist.
Certainly.
So to speak. But in terms of structure, I'm wondering if now is the time where we'd be more beneficial to have perhaps a division superintendent and somebody? How do you see that? Like, is there somebody underneath that's specifically for wastewater, or he just runs the entire operation?
Well, currently, we have an assistant water superintendent. He's been appointed the interim water superintendent, and he's doing a fine job. I see him continuing in that role where he's generally responsible for the day-to-day water operations, and the water wastewater superintendent would bring kind of an overall responsibility with regards to our wastewater planning. Now, if we decide to go in the direction of contract operations for wastewater, which has been suggested in the past, that's someone that would then be able to manage that contract on a day-to-day basis. But with the situation we have with water and that being municipally operated at this point, I would say that our current assistant water superintendent, interim water superintendent, could certainly be responsible for water operations generally.
I know the contract that we had with Weston and Sampson, there was a lot of deliverables that were part of that in terms of the things that they were going to look at. In the six months, how much progress do you think has been made towards that? Will we get, without the extension, will we be able to get all of the documents that were requested in the contract?
Yeah, we will be able to get the documents that we need. Most of those were related to policy upgrades, safety procedures. We had a whole health and safety inspection that was done by Weston and Sampson, looking at all of our conditions of our water facilities and making recommendations. So we will be able to have all the deliverables related to that contract. At this point, since it is, that general manager is not in the chain of command, if you will, of the employees, there are some elements related to personnel improvements or reviews that need to be done that this position wouldn't be appropriate to do, that is the general manager, but a water wastewater superintendent would be.
Yeah, I definitely think that that's important. So I would support your recommendation. I thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Eric.
Thank you, Jeff. Very comprehensive outline of everything you've got going on here. You know, my only comment, and not that I want to beat this drum any more than I really have to, but it seems to me that combining water and wastewater into one staff position would only help our case if we were to try to create or investigate creative funding sources for a combination water and wastewater. I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but you know, the point I've made in the past about trying to combine the two to tap into money for the wastewater project. So I don't know if having that one person serve both functions strengthens that argument or helps us present that case, but I too would support your recommendation.
Thank you.
Norm.
Thank you. I have a couple of very specific questions about the budget, and, you know, we've got some of our accounting folks here, and don't be afraid to refer to them if you need answers on them. One is, we've got a fairly substantial amount of overtime in the water department, $280,000 worth of overtime on a, with salaries of $1,001,000. So it's 25% overtime roughly. I mean, that's a lot. So it's, that's saying that every person that's eligible for overtime is probably picking up eight to 10 hours a week or something like that. And I know we've had some vacancies, but I'm wondering, what is, what is driving that overtime number?
There's a couple of things. One is that it is a seven-day-a-week operation and that we have to physically inspect the facilities, the 24 pump stations, seven days a week. So we have people that cycle through that. Our typical staff is Monday through Friday, and so we bring people in on the overtime on the weekends to deal with those. There's also, our infrastructure is, is older, so we have a significant number of water main breaks that, you know, typically happen at all hours of the day and night that will lead to some overtime. But I would say that you're right on target in the fact that we have six vacancies within the department, and as we, you know, bring on the water wastewater superintendent, or if the board chooses to just do a water superintendent, somebody that can help us fill those positions and reduce overtime would be an important component of that. I don't think that'll completely go away because, like I said, we have weekend operations as well as the after-hours. I mean, people can call up, we have somebody on call that's every night, so there's a standby rotation that happens in the department as well. So there's extra pay associated with that. That's a contract obligation that we have for two people to be on standby, paid every night to receive calls. If they answer a call, there's callback minimums associated with those. Those are all contract requirements, but they do add to the overtime burden.
Okay. So some of it is being driven by agreement, union agreements?
Absolutely.
In terms of, as you said, the minimum amount of time that a person could be called back for? Is that, is that applicable just to weekends, or is that to any time?
Anytime.
I see. Okay. Is that, have we attempted to negotiate that, that issue?
It's always a component that's on the table. I don't know how far we've gotten in those discussions. I have not been part of the negotiations with this particular union. I defer to town administration in that regard, but I know it's something that's always on the table as, you know, how to reduce that. I know that we've had several proposals relative to minimizing that standby time and how we could restructure that. It hasn't been successful recently.
Have our consultants?
I defer to town administration on that.
Have our consultants commented with regard to the comparability of our overtime to other departments that they've seen, that they've worked with?
We had that operational study done about two years ago. I don't recall that they specifically commented on overtime. They did make a recommendation to fill at least one of those vacant positions that might help reduce some of that, but I don't know that they compared our overtime to other communities.
I see. Okay. All right. Well, I think it's a good, good question to find out if, you know, to see if there's other, other factors going, going on here, or if it's a matter of supervisory control, or if it's, you know, who knows? There's, it could be a whole laundry list of reasons for overtime, but in any case, it's a very costly element of operations if it's, if it, you know, certainly overtime in many cases is preferable to paying an additional person on staff with union benefits and as we're thinking.
A trade-off, right.
But I think, you know, clearly, we have to be very careful about how, how overtime occurs, so. The other question is, and I noticed that there's a substantial increase in the transfer out to general fund, $97,000 increase compared to the actual amount of $353,000 in 2019. The current year plan is for $450,000. Can you tell me what that represents?
That one might be better answered by our finance staff.
Okay.
I don't know if they have a better answer for that.
That's part of the presentation we'll have for you on the budget. We have a specific, there is a specific reason for that that we'll cover in that presentation.
Okay. Do you have some hint while we're on the subject of water?
In the past, going back a number of years, when the town had an economic decline and budget issues, funding of certain positions throughout town and in the general operation of the town are allocated to funds other than the general fund. And so an attempt to realign those positions into the general operating fund, general fund operating budget, those positions in this year's budget presentation are reflected in the general fund, which gives us the opportunity then to do a true indirect cost allocation to our water, for example, enterprise, in accordance with the DOR guidelines and that, for that. And so if you're not charging something directly there and you're putting it back in the general fund, the total charge to the water fund is probably roughly the same, but basically you're putting, you're paying for it out of the general fund, and you've increased your allocation to the, to the water fund.
But previously, those expenses have been part of the operating expenses of the water department?
Yes.
And on, in individual line items?
Right, and that's one of the slides that you'll see in the budget presentation.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure I could account for $97,000 of reductions, but I guess I'll wait for the later presentation to detail that. There, there don't appear to be line items in the fiscal 2021 water department budget that have gone down $97,000.
Yeah, most of them would be salaries, so it's a netting. So, and it isn't a dollar-for-dollar, you know, expenses that were previously charged to the water fund that are now in the general fund are not exactly the change in the allocation to the, of indirect costs. So it wasn't a dollar-for-dollar.
I see. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Jeff, thanks for the presentation. I noticed in the cover sheet, you referenced an 11% increase in water consumption this summer over last. Is that part of a trend? Are we, are we starting to see? I'm just curious if that's something that we should be concerned about. Is it fairly?
I think the bulk of that is related to the sales to Barnstable. They had significant water that we've been selling to them, but it's been increasing. They do indicate that with the treatment that's coming online, they expect that to tailor off later next year. We'll see, but I think that a significant portion of that is the water sales to Barnstable.
Okay. I just wanted to just flag that. Do we track complaints? Do you have a, I mean, tell me a little bit about your system for tracking complaints, customer complaints?
Yeah, our tracking of customer complaints is within our MUNIS system. There's, there's note fields within each account, and we track the complaints by account within the MUNIS system.
Would you say we're doing better on the complaint department or even? Or how would you, what's, what's the trend there?
I think the trend is slowly improving, absolutely, on both the water quality as well as customer service particularly.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. As you know, I have a very strong interest in the master plan and obviously the water rate study. As you had mentioned earlier, we have significant issues in terms of the aging of the system and the need for improvement, so I think, I consider that very much a high priority, and I'm looking forward to getting a copy of the draft master plan and, and looking at the study as well. I continue to sort of, I'm glad on the list is the hydrant maintenance and the value, the valve exercising and the flushing. I don't want to sound like I'm complaining again, but I just think those are areas that we need better productivity out of the department. I just want to be on record once again saying that that's an area that needs to be improved. I think with respect to your management recommendations, I'm totally in support. Anything that can improve the performance and the productivity in this department is to be encouraged and supported, so I, I too, like the other board members, are totally on, totally on board with that, and I'm very much uncomfortable going forward. I also think that with respect to PFAS, and this is my final comment, I'm glad you're tracking that and staying on top of that. I think from everything that I'm hearing from other water superintendents and in other places with like, I had a meeting the other day with folks at DEP on something unrelated, but clearly now that the legislature's set aside some money to study, investigate, monitor, hopefully there'll be more attention to this issue, which is growing in significance. Hopefully, Yarmouth, we're in reasonably good shape, but the only way we're going to know is to expand our monitoring and testing of this. So I hope we can continue to take an aggressive and expansive sort of perspective on pursuing any potential suspicion that this type of contaminant could be here and impacting us.
Certainly.
Because we're like a lot of other towns, we just don't know.
Right.
And we're finding, you know, the news hasn't been, when we find out, the news hasn't been particularly good. So I applaud you for focusing on that as well. So, there you go. Those are my questions, my comments. Again, I support your recommendations on the water and wastewater superintendent and look forward to that transition.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I just have a few questions. Mark talked about this increased trend, 11%, which you think is at least in major part due to the sales of water in Barnstable. And then it says, talks about the daily pumping capacity of 13.2 million gallons, and then parenthetically, it says with largest source offline. What does that mean exactly? The, the part that says with largest source offline?
Yeah, that, that last sentence really was just reference purposes. I realize there's not a lot to compare that to, but the largest source being the most significant well producing the most water. So DEP requires us to do an analysis when we look at all of our production capabilities and take that biggest producer out of the equation. So assuming for some reason something happened that you were down that well, what is your production look like? And that's what that's referencing. And 13.2 million gallons a day is significant. We didn't even exceed 10 million gallons this past year.
So even with that upward trend, it doesn't present any, any problems to our water supply? Is that basically what you'd say?
Correct, because of that significant capacity, absolutely.
All right. You're talking about well nine with offline due to PCE impacts, and you mentioned that it was monitored quarterly, and it, the, the test wells seem to be showing improvement.
Right.
Other, how do you address that problem other than monitoring wells? Is there any treatment phase to that or anything else you can do other than monitor those wells?
We have the ability, and it's an accepted practice, to blend that water with other water to reduce the levels, but our preference would be to completely eliminate or at least have it as a non-detect in the water supply. So we're continuing to monitor, and because it's reducing the levels, we're hopeful that that will happen, that there might be a plume that was there and is, you know, passing through that area. None of the other wells that are nearby, and there are two others, have any impacts. So our hope is that that is just through regular monitoring. We'll demonstrate that was just very kind of short-term, and then we'll potentially look at the options of bringing it back online if the monitoring proves out. Options, like I said, do include blending, but we don't necessarily want to do that. We want to eliminate the contaminants and then bring it online.
Okay. With the master plan, how far out is that going to be? Is that a five-year study, 10-year study? How, what, what is the, what is envisioned there in terms of the timeframe that that plan's going to cover?
It's a, it's a general plan for the water system going forward, so there's no deadline or expiration date, if you will. Our last one is about 11 years old, so that's on the high end. Usually about seven years would be a more appropriate timeframe to have these updated, every seven years updated, or as major things change within the water system or, or water quality issues that need to be updated within the plan. It's just a plan and target moving forward, no expiration date, but we do want to regularly update it.
And you mentioned the innovative ice product for cleaning the wells. Is this, is this relatively a new solution, and how is it working? Or do you, or do you know yet?
It's still a little early to know that it's completely effective. It's not something that we've created, though. We know that there's others doing it, and it's been very effective in reducing the sediments in the pipe as well as any scaling on the pipe without having to completely relate, replace mains. And so we're very hopeful that we can target some of the more significant issues and not have to excavate and replace a pipe, but simply do a thorough cleaning with this, you know, inserting this ice slurry into the pipe and pumping it through as a slug and then cleaning the pipe that way.
Is this some kind of a synthetic product?
No, it's ice.
It's natural ice?
Natural ice. Clean water. People shouldn't be concerned. It's just frozen.
Okay. Now, you mentioned these water main pits, and you said there was about 60 of them. I, I know exactly the type of, I've seen them. People have to crawl with all kinds of vermin and everything else in these very confined spaces. Somebody passed out or got knocked out down there, they'd probably never find them.
Right.
And it's really not safe for the workers, but you're But you said there's sixty, I'm surprised there isn't more than that? Or is that just a starting point, the sixty?
It's the sixty most critical, the most difficult situations where there might only be eighteen or twenty-four inches of clearance to get through. And there's certainly other crawl spaces, and some of those have been addressed, or they might be closer to a doorway or entryway or bulkhead, which if it's just easy access, that's not a problem. It's when it's completely across the house or a crawl space that it's much more difficult, much more dangerous, if you will.
Might that list be added to if, you know, other really difficult areas that are omitted turn up when guys go out to try to service them?
Absolutely. We want to come up with a manageable list, but yes, as we accomplish this, we'll look to do others with an eye towards any safety improvements that might improve that.
Now, you talked about rehabbing these wells, and you said four to five are redeveloped each year. What is, what is involved in that process of rehabbing these wells? What actually is done to them?
Sure, there's a casing that goes down into the ground of varying depths, you know, typically at sixty to a hundred feet. There's a screen at the bottom, and that screen is where the water enters and is pulled up through the casing. Those screen, over time, it's gravel packed, so there's gravel around it to try to minimize the fines and other materials that come in from the surrounding soil. But that screen does get clogged over time. So, you know, if we have twenty-four wells and we're looking to target, you know, four to five a year, we hope to get to every one on that rotating, you know, five or six-year basis, kind of like with the hydrants, every five or six years they get addressed in a preventive maintenance way. And what that looks like is they will typically surge the well and really try to, you know, push those fines out. The motors will be pulled and check the motors and the pumps to make sure that there's no problems. Again, preventive maintenance. So, there's more than just kind of cleaning the well, there's also preventive maintenance of the equipment as well associated with that.
Okay, good. You also talked about the consultant preparing recommendations on how to best connect the water residents to income and quit heights. When do you think there'll be some kind of specific plan on that and a definitive or at least a reasonably calculated cost for that?
Yeah, what we've asked them to do, and they felt they could accomplish it, is to have a component of the master plan reflect that. So, it's something that we could have a target moving forward. So, we do, I do expect that in the next couple of weeks, when that draft of the master plan's released, there will be a piece of that that talks about that particular effort and what that might cost.
And in terms of the combined position, did the consultants have any input on that? Or is that just an internal recommendation that you've made based on your experience in Chatham and also as DPW director here?
A little bit of both. It was part of that operational study. They realized the need for waste, even though this was done a couple of years ago, we had that operational study done of the water department, and there was a recognition of a need that the community was heading in the direction of wastewater. And so, that was part of the recommendation from that report, but also my observations and experience in working with this. This is a utility, which I think there are some very similar components, and there's some overlap, and this would be a good synergy by having this position that oversees this water resource. If we do head in the direction of a water resource enterprise fund, we'll have one position and the staff, the administrative staff associated with this position be able to focus on that particular fund.
Okay, and I do support the combin- combined position.
I make a motion that we support the recommendation by Jeff Colby to authorize the creation of a wastewater and water superintendent position. This would replace the current water superintendent position.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to support Jeff's recommendation on the combined position. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? So, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next matter is the 2020 annual town meeting articles review.
So, I think there was a, in your pack, it should be an updated one-page, your articles as we see it proposed now. It's probably grown a little bit since the first time maybe you've seen it. But as you know, we would have to make, I think, the final decision on January twenty-eighth as to what's going to move to annual town meeting.
Can I just, what's the petitioned article?
I think that there's a petition article related to doing something at some solar, at the landfill site.
And what about the polystyrene foam?
I anticipate there'll be a question for that. I don't have any data. I know RAZWAAC has been, had a meeting on that recently, the polystyrene, Robie, maybe you'll be able to answer that?
I just don't see it on here.
Is that article going to be brought forward at the spring meeting?
That's a great question. At the last time we met, we were kind of under the impression that it would be pushed off till the fall meeting.
Okay.
There were some questions that the board had, and we were looking for, kind of for your guidance, and before we came back to you, under the pressure of the spring meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So, I think the fall would probably be more appropriate.
Thank you, that explains why it's something, all right. In any event, they'd have, I think, till the twenty-eighth, right?
Yeah, so anytime during the month of January, prior to the twenty-eighth, we could...
Is that the date for petitioned articles?
Yeah, it'd be whatever the second meeting in January is.
Okay.
There's also going to be, it hasn't been decided yet how we're going to format it, but number twenty-eight land disposition, there'll be a number of parcel addresses available for consideration at town meeting for additional solar opportunities, not on buildings, but typically what we refer to as solar canopies in parking lot areas.
Did you say January, petitioned articles, January third? That's what the agenda item says.
Oh, if it's a, as a petitioner, would have to get it to fill before that with the appropriate number of signatures.
Yeah, it says Wednesday, January first petitioned articles due January third.
Yep.
On the projected agenda items.
Yep.
So, that means they got to get them to fill by then?
Yes.
Yeah, because I always thought that was earlier than the town update for the other articles, which I think is later in January.
Twenty-eight, we can generate, Board of Slegman can generate one up to the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like the third, huh, Tracy, that they have to get the petitioned one there? Okay.
I have a question regarding, item seventeen on the list is CPA surcharge reduction or exemption. Is that one item?
It's, we have a different one in our...
Yeah.
That's a good question.
I have seventeen, adopt municipal water infrastructure investment fund is...
It's eighteen on the paper.
Eighteen. CPA surcharge reduction or exemption. We would have to decide if you want to do a reduction in percentage or an exemption, either one. I don't anticipate you'd want to do, have both questions available. So, we talked a little bit, and Chairman Ellis's memo and presentation last week talked about if you exempted a hundred, the first hundred thousand dollars evaluation, that would be one option that they seem to have supported.
Correct.
Or still on for final discussion would be, do you want to go to two percent?
So, it can't be both?
Well, I suppose we could structure it such that it could, and you'd have that decision made at town meeting.
Well, again, I guess I'm concerned that we get locked into a series of article numbers and so forth, and that locks us out of a, doing some combination.
I think that's something that if the board gave us clear direction as to how they'd like to proceed on that topic, we'd be able to, you know, make the articles.
I think all I'm saying is having two articles may, at this stage, may at least allow us the opportunity to make a decision and not be worried about whether we have only one option. We had also talked about the ordering.
Right.
And when we wanted to consider that in town meeting. And with regard to the wastewater funding, I know, I think Eric, you had talked about that in terms of what might be the best, best way to order those.
I don't know if I did or not. There were, there were options that I had spoken about investigating as a result of Gary's being here. One was the exemption.
Right.
One was the, utilizing the one percent, which the CPC seemed agreeable to. I think those, I think the exemption was worth about five hundred thousand. The one percent was worth about six hundred and thirty thousand. And together, you know, if we're able to do both, that gets us to almost the value of what one and a half percent would be worth, so...
And I think in that event, you said you'd do the exemption first, because that's really going to be the source of the other six thirty.
Right.
I think that was Eric's point.
Yeah, I was, I was more concerned with, you know, if we were going to ask for the full one and a half, and the community preservation committee sponsored their own article to change that number, then, you know, we would, might have to have a backup article to do the gap funding. I think that was the gist. So, maybe we don't need to do that if we can arrive at the same number through a couple of different means and methods, so... But I hadn't ever considered doing multiple or more than one, but it certainly seems like that there are two ways to get us there. One is the exemption plus the, plus the one percent, and then there's the one and a half percent, which I think will get some pushback from the CPC.
Right.
I thought that we left it as, or Rich was going to investigate what it broke down to mean. However, that the rationale for their proposal about the exemption was that we didn't touch the one percent, and I thought staff told us we didn't need to at first, at all, because we would then be missing out on the state match.
Correct. Instead, we're going to get their three percent, they were still going to get the state match with their three percent. With the exemption, that was going to bring back almost an equivalent to the, to the one percent that would be paid over.
But I didn't think we were talking about doing both at this point.
No, I don't.
No, it was going, yeah, I think the discussion was...
Well, what I'm hearing is that they're talking about having the exemption and taking a percentage away.
Right, because it's almost like an offset, really.
That's not, that's not the way I'm...
No. We didn't discuss that.
No, I think, if I may, the chairman had presented a opportunity for a compromise on this topic. In his memo, he discussed that there was support and hit with his group for three percent. However, with the hundred thousand dollar exemption, they could retain their three percent, you could make up five hundred thousand dollars to get towards a water infrastructure fund. And then that's to Eric's point, about another hundred thirty thousand dollars gets you at one percent on that fund, so...
It's doing both due to them.
Lose the state match.
Well, so then you, you know...
No, they wouldn't lose the state match.
If you get one to three percent, you lose the, you lose that extra bonus match that you get for being a three percent community. You'd still get matched to whatever the level the state's matching, to whatever percentage you put in, but there was that special accelerator for the three percent communities.
Which is how much?
It, I hear varying things. It was, yeah.
It's been changing, and there's actually just guidance out on that, so really have to get with the CPC and the, and that staff and get that in front of you. But just to clarify, Mr. Tully is correct, just so we all on the same page what we're talking about. I did meet with our assessor this afternoon and get an update. He had looked at the numbers to validate them, and essentially, the one hundred thousand dollar exemption applicable only to the CPA surcharge is worth about a, on the overall tax levy, five hundred thousand dollars. And a one percent water infrastructure fund add would add about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the tax levy.
One percent add, meaning to what?
So, if you were to add a water infrastructure fund...
New tax?
Yeah. A water infrastructure fund of one percent.
As far as I'm concerned.
But, but Norm, that's offset by the exemption, most of it.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think he's saying we would have to do both. We'd have to have the one percent tax and have the CPA change.
What he's saying is the exemption of the hundred thousand would be replaced with the one percent add, which would kind of be neutral. It's a new tax, but because you're giving them the exemption, it's kind of transitioning, so actually the rates...
I think that's what he's saying.
Isn't only the, isn't only the difference, the hundred and thirty, going to be a net new tax?
I don't think so.
All right, I'll try this again. A one hundred thousand dollar exemption would save half a million dollars off the tax levy. If you then created a water infrastructure fund at a one percent surcharge, that would add six hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the overall tax levy. So, the net increase is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, based on FY twenty values and data, that translates to about two cents per thousand. So, it's six bucks for a three hundred thousand dollar house.
What was the one and a half percent? What did that calculate out to being one and a half percent? That was what we had talked about.
Rounding up, it's about a million dollars. So, the earlier proposal that we had been talking about was to reduce the CPA surcharge one and a half percent and adopt a one and a half percent water infrastructure fund.
Okay.
One would go down a million dollars, and one would go up a million dollars.
Right.
So, the alternative approach is to still adopt the water infrastructure fund, but only at one percent. And not do a reduction of the CPA, but the effect of adding the exemption results in the same reduction. There's a little bit of an imbalance. It's not a, it's not a perfect dollar-for-dollar.
So, so where does the half a percent loss in the original proposal get made up?
The half percent loss is to the detriment of wastewater funding. And so, I'll have to recalculate the financial plan, and we'll present it to the Water Resource Advisory Committee. But, you know, that plan does rely on ultimately a one and a half percent, but it doesn't rely on that until FY twenty-five, twenty-six, because up until that point, it's all pre-funding.
Well, it's actually, if a percent, a percent and a half would be worth about nine hundred and forty-five thousand, whereas the, with the exemption and the one percent is worth one point three, one, six thirty and five hundred, eleven, one point one three oh? So, it actually works out a couple hundred thousand dollars to our benefit.
But you're not taking that savings from the CPA and putting it to wastewater. It just goes away, and then you add the one percent, which does go to wastewater. But, yeah, Matt, just on the wastewater funding side, you know, as we, we've been telling you, these are all our best estimates. We're concerned that our estimates don't pan out, which is obviously would be a concern, but honestly, it's, you know, let's see what short-term rental revenues do look like. Perhaps they could come in greater than what's been estimated. Perhaps we'd be mildly surprised with the Water Protection Trust and get more than what we anticipated. Perhaps, you know, another legislation or funding sources become available. Perhaps we get a subsidized loan instead of a zero-interest loan. You know, things could happen to the positive as well, so...
When do we find out the numbers?
We have to have a project that's designed and ready to go to find the stuff out.
I mean, the rental numbers and the...
Just projections now, it's going to take probably, it's going to take some, probably a year or so of history before we can...
Yeah, it's going to be about this time next year before we get a pretty good handle on it.
When did that go to an effect?
July one.
July.
But don't forget, all rental contracts that were signed before December thirty-first or January one were exempted. So, anybody renting in that spring cycle there, they were not going to be seen. So, by this time next year, we'll have a better understanding.
Talking to our local realtor group, and some of them on the Economic Development Council Committee, upwards of sixty percent of rentals were done prior to January one exactly for that reason. So, it's very, you know, we're underwhelmed with what we got for this first quarter this year as far as an increase.
But the first month was two million dollars, right? Is that, I think it was July's contribution to the fund was...
Oh, to the state, to the fund that you're on the board, yeah. The aggregated total of all the towns.
Right. And that still hasn't been determined on the disbursement yet, so they're still working through that, but a lot of variables.
The bottom line on that article is, you know, we listed it as a surcharge reduction following the original thought of a reduction of one and a half and an increase of a one and a half on the... and an increase of a 1.5% on the whiff. But based on the prior discussion last month, or last meeting, you added the option that could perhaps be an exemption. Didn't contemplate that you might want to do both, because that didn't seem to be the nature of the discussion, but...
It wasn't, but it's a good idea. What's the net impact, what's the impact to a $300,000 house, six bucks?
If you went the exemption route with a 1% whiff, it's about six bucks.
It's camel's nose under the tent. While we're on this topic, Rich, we also need to clarify each of these. If we were to make an adjustment on Community Preservation Act or a whiff or the exemption, these all require ballot action as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so if you had multiple options, all the multiple options would have to be town meeting article and ballot vote.
So we just need to be mindful of that as well.
Yeah.
Can you go back for a second bite at the apple? If we were to do the exemption at one time, could you go back and make up?
Exactly.
Figure out what the numbers were?
So one of the things to keep in mind is you can always reserve the right to change your mind and recommend something in the future now that we've hit fiscal year 2020. We could, I believe you have to keep it for, might be you have to keep it for three years, but there's no reason you couldn't increase. So in other words, if you did a 1% whiff, you could adopt a further surcharge in a future year.
Or if we did, if we just did the exemption this year and the numbers were better than anticipated, maybe we wouldn't have to do anything else. But if they came in lower than anticipated, then we could always do something in subsequent years to make up the difference.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I think that's a good place to start. You know, you don't want to overwhelm people at town meeting. So I think the simplest solution is always your best first foot forward. So I would suggest at least starting with that exemption. See where our revenues come in later and then making the adjustment if we have to. Maybe we won't need to.
I think it's important, and Rich has been pretty steady with this commentary, to begin pre-funding as much as possible. And I think that goes a long way to giving you better options four or five years out from now, so...
But you have to take in, you know, we're going to have a school vote, too. And, you know, the taxpayers are only going to be willing to tolerate so much. So I think that to take a small bite and then go back for a second small bite, if you had to, is better than trying to take a very big bite.
What's the legislation say on the adoption of the whiff? I know adopting a whiff, when we talked about it last time, had to have a funding source, but does it have to be a full percent? Could we say we want to fund it at 0.9%? Which would be neutral?
I don't recall that off the top of my head. I suspect you're probably correct, though. You could pick it up to 3%, so it could be anything up to 3%.
So we could calculate whatever that transfer is to the percentage? I mean, if we wanted to be neutral.
If you want it to be neutral, that's a pretty good trade-off to get started, I suppose, to keep it easy, but...
Well, I'm with Eric. I'm very concerned about putting too much on the ballot and putting too many items on the table. So we'll need to think, there are multiple options and multiple ways to go here. I'm assuming the goal, and tell me if I'm wrong, is in this discussion, the desire is to take action on a whiff. Is that the priority? And then find some way to mitigate the impact of that through the exemption?
That's the direction we've been working from, based on, you know, 2016 forward.
And under one scenario, we're talking about maybe not even touching the CPA surcharge. Just leaving that alone as is and just taking this step?
Well, with the exemption, I think we'd need the exemption to make it neutral. But I don't think that's overly complicated. I mean, we're telling them it's neutral. We're switching it from one to another.
But they're going to be impacted to the extent of the exemption, right, the CPC?
Yes.
Yes.
Those are net dollars to them.
Yeah. But it preserves their match.
Correct.
And their full percentage.
Right. And with added money being put into the program, the amount of state match will probably be more than what we've seen in the past, which will be good. And the additional revenue in that program is pretty much assured because of the changes in the state law to fund the state's share of this.
I kind of like Tracy's idea about exploring, working out the decimal to be a wash. And then you could put them on together and you could tell the taxpayers that this, you know, this zero's out. I mean, I don't think that's very complicated.
So that should be one of the options to be looked at as you do your study, Rich.
It's going to be a fraction of a percent.
But once we get the...
Doesn't matter.
Once we go through the process, as Rich has said, though, to have the ballot question that sets up the fund, I think in future years, we can... The ballot question doesn't talk about the percentage, does it? It just allows for the creation.
You have to have funding to go into it.
I understand that, but does the ballot question very specifically say the percentage? So if we wanted to change the percentage, it goes, it has to go back again?
Go back to ballot, just like with CPA.
Okay.
Right.
But, I mean, you know, four years from now, five years from now, the conversation could be a lot different. Perhaps short-term revenue is, the tax revenue is pretty significant. And if you keep putting some, you know, say potentially some free cash, or the Water Protection Trust has got really well-defined rules on reimbursement for particularly those towns that are out of the gate quickly with projects. I mean, who knows what the conversation here is going to be five years from now, you know?
Right, you may want to rely more on those dollars, you know, if they're available.
I, you know, I've always believed that those communities that, with that Water Protection Trust that have gotten their project in the queue very early will stand the best chance to take the most gain from it.
Right.
So what is Article 13 Tourism Fund?
So the tourism fund that was established some years ago will be impacted by the short-term rental. So the question would be, I mean, obviously, I think the committee, the CEDC, would like to have some increased revenue, but the concept there would be that if we don't do anything with it, their revenue would go up according to the formula. I should have some numbers maybe by next meeting for you as to what that would look like as a draft. But we could be preemptive in this and just set it such that it stays constant exempting that.
That was by Home Row Petition and legislation as well. How flexible is that in changing?
Well, it's the same process.
I know it's a subject of appropriation, so we've been down this road before.
It goes through the same process. It'd be a couple of years to get through, probably.
Well, it's pretty straightforward. And actually, just to be clear, 13 is the current year funding of the Tourism Fund, based on the current formula, which is based on last year's collection. So it doesn't include new short-term rentals, so we're okay this year. 14 is to change it to exclude the new short-term rental so that you're not... Basically, there was a base amount in any rooms excise over that base amount, which this new short-term rental would be all over.
Right, but we're not...
25% of it would go to tourism, so...
Well, we're going to get one pot of money. They're not going to determine or break out, from what I understood from the DOR, where it came from. So how are we going to...
No, we're expecting to know that.
Well, the lady who spoke at our meeting from the DOR said it wouldn't be separated.
How long ago was that?
It was our first, were you there for the meeting?
No, I, we followed up with her, and they're endeavoring, they haven't completed it yet, but they're endeavoring to break it out by community, by source.
Oh, interesting, because it's all these years, they haven't told us any source that's contributed.
Yeah, no, they're not going to tell us, you know, the source of the facility, but private rental versus hotel, commercial rental.
I mean, it should be reasonably easy to do that, considering the fact that all the people that would have had to file those tax returns would be new to the system.
That's the bureaucracy within, that's the difficulty, is one part of DOR getting the information to the other part.
They did say it was going to be one part.
They did, and it was because they didn't want to get into the weeds, if you will, on that topic, but there was so much pushback on it.
And all it would require is to ask those people that are filling out those tax returns is to complete a little box that says, "Is this your first time filing under the new state legislation?" And you got the information. I mean, for crying out loud.
I think eventually we'll get the information. I mean, Dan and the other Cape Town managers have been putting a lot of, having a lot of dialogue and encouraging them to make that information available. It's a fairly sustained effort.
The DOR explained to us that they did not want this whole thing to ever occur. So when they were told at the late hour by the legislature that it was going to happen...
This is a staff uprising at DOR?
This was a legislative event.
Fire the legislature and...
We were very surprised that this went through, yeah.
So are we, has somebody looked at the wording of the legislation that's passed to verify that we, in fact, can differentiate this fund?
I think we would have to have language in there, and we would get this set before we propose it related to casting it at some level prior to the introduction of the fund, whatever that number would be.
So right now, the legislation basically refers to rooms excise at, I think it's 25% over a million five, some base amount, and meals excise at 10%.
So you're saying that the...
And so all this is considered rooms excise, all this new short-term.
Exactly.
So absent a change, hence the placeholder on Article 14, if our estimate's $500,000 of new rooms excise because of the new short-term rentals, then it's all going to be over the base. So we're talking about an extra $100,000 going to, or $125,000 going to the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund.
So my point is that it's not just going to be a warrant article. It's going to have to, we're going to have to file legislation to support that.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
No impact for this year's budget, though.
You know, you could tell us.
FY '22.
We just needed to get direction one way or the other, if that's a...
Well, has the CE, obviously, I think, you know, I'm sure.
It's been discussed, yeah. But it's a decision for the board to make if you wanted to go down and give us direction to provide that language for an article.
Do we have to do that?
Not till later in January, get some time. We'll get a little bit more information for you, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know why they were broken up, but can we talk about the new school ballot while we're on the subject of the town meeting warrant? Just because I think the two kind of go together.
Sure.
I don't really know what that agenda item was about.
Just the ballot on the agenda, the ballot question?
Yeah.
That I believe was, that I believe was to ask the voters to do a debt exemption for our obligation on the Maticke's project.
So that was it?
Right, so...
Pretty much.
Well, so the MSBA has communicated to us that they would like a vote from the board indicating that it's been placed on a future upcoming ballot election cycle.
And our options are, it could be November or it could be May.
That's correct.
But if you put it on in May and you have a problem, you'd have a second opportunity in November.
That's correct.
And it's critical that that passes. Or it'll come out of the operating budget.
Well, don't forget, though, there was, that debt schedule I gave you shows, I think, for our upcoming budget cycle this year, proposed for the budget that's in front of you, $52,000. It wasn't until the year after, a much larger slug of money would be due on that note.
So it's the second year, Rich, that our, was it $3 million or so would kick in? What year would that be?
I believe we're looking at FY '22.
FY '20?
It might be, you know, would be a substantially higher amount.
'22?
It's not the full amount, because they're going to do the borrowing in two phases on these projects. They borrow a large slug.
So what would our obligation be roughly in FY '22 on the school debt?
I don't recall the debt service and, at on the spot, but if I...
$2 million, maybe?
A couple of mil. And we could probably fund the first one if we had to out of free cash.
Two million?
Which we'd have to plan, we have to plan, I think we should plan for.
So I think it's going to go from something like $52,000 to a couple of million?
Yeah, that's about right.
So...
Well, I think that at issue is MSBA.
All they wanted tonight, or, you know, they didn't say tonight, but they wanted an assurance, because they're going to restart the project.
I assure you, this is going to a ballot.
Right. So are you...
No other way.
Are you going to the, you know, are you, they wanted me to make sure that you knew the impact of the borrowing, what it would be when they start borrowing, and we gave you the schedule last meeting. And then they wanted assurance that we know that, the impact, and that there would be an election set for the debt exclusion. That's what they wanted confirmation.
I think the sooner we face it, the better.
That we put this on the May ballot.
I do, I would second that.
Definitely, because if it doesn't fail, we need time to consider alternatives. If it doesn't pass, we need time to consider alternatives.
And I think as a, maybe you're going to talk about it in the budget, but perhaps that $52,000 needs to be put there just in case.
Right, we've got that covered.
Okay.
So what will be on the ballot? The school, the potential 1%? Is the exemption itself on the ballot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, never mind, it went back.
So that's two, possibly three, if we decide to tweak that fraction of 1% in order to be an exact opposite.
To wash it off, yeah.
So that's three ballot. Was that it?
Well, we, the Tourism Fund, no, the, you had the whiff, the CPA piece, and then the debt exclusion. The only other question, and we'll know more Friday, this Friday, whether or not we need to fund DHY to get it started. So there's still a vote that has to authorize DHY, but there could be a scenario where they would want to get the project started with some design and engineering money. I don't know what that looks like. The last time we talked with the group about it, they didn't seem like they were ambitious to put it on the spring town meeting schedule for the other towns, but we'll know more on Friday.
But we could always put it on the fall.
You could, that's correct.
I think we should stop where we are.
I think so, too.
Any idea how much they'd be?
It wasn't, I don't recall offhand, I think, was it $5 million?
So it's, it gets to be a little bit of a complicated discussion. All these things we've discussed have been presented to you in the presentations of our DHY versus our Yarmouth-only discussions as a one cost, so to speak. But the reality of it, once we get into the weeds on this, is if you go with DHY, it's not just one simple cost. It's the DHY cost for the plant and Yarmouth's cost for the collection system. I kind of aggregated them for a simple discussion. But it's really, you know, a little harder to execute because you've got two moving parts.
There's also the complicating factor of the Route 28 reconstruction project that might be calling for money to lay pipe in the ground sooner than anybody's ready to, so...
Well, that we definitely need to be prepared for, because if we do not position ourselves on that, that'll really set us back.
And so that's presented as Article, potential Article 20 on this list. There would be, still to be determined, a bond authorization for design and engineering, and that would be Yarmouth on its own, or just for the Route 28 collection system, or it could encompass the Yarmouth-only plant, or it could encompass paying money to DHY. But the interesting discussion on this is it doesn't need to be a ballot vote. If you want to exempt it, which is the safest route to go, we can exempt it. But we've presented a plan that's funded without having to be hitting the tax rate. So theoretically, you could vote it as, just as a town meeting vote, not have an election, because you're not exempting it from 2.5% and hope that everything comes to fruition the way we've laid out. And then you've got it. But the safer route is, you do vote the exemption, hope that everything still comes to fruition as we've laid out, and just because you voted as exempt, when you go and set your tax rate, our finance staff is pretty good at this, you don't raise money that you're using other sources to pay for. And so you exempt it as your backstop, and for sake of argument, say it's a million dollars debt service. If you raise a million dollars otherwise, you then do not place that on the tax rate.
So what number were you thinking as a placeholder for this article?
To be determined, but, you know, we're probably looking in the 3 to 5 million dollar range to get started.
And what do we have in our capital stabilization fund?
I have it in the budget presentation.
We're getting ahead of ourselves, but they all go together.
Not enough, is what I would say right now. In that one fund.
But the other thing is, you could authorize the borrowing and then still elect to pay it down with capital stabilization.
We'll know more, I'm hoping, in a couple of weeks on the scheduling of particularly the Route 28 interface.
So to answer the question, potentially for...
I told you it was going to be an exciting year.
Well, it's just a lot, and when you think about the, you know, I think we've got to be very sensitive to, as it's already been mentioned, what's going to be hitting the tax rate this year and how we're going to manage all that. You know, so putting that on any ballot with the school, I think, may not be a good idea because we have... that on any ballot with the school, I think, may not be a good idea, because we have got to get this, we have, we don't have...
Are we talking about DHY?
Yeah, but I'm talking about the funding for that, if we were to put the school debt exemption and a DHY number on the same ballot.
I agree with you.
I thought it was the recipe for success.
You could always, again, since you do have funding sources you identified that could go towards it, you do have time, it's not a bang-bang vote like the DPW facility was, you know, you're doing that right now, you need to pass the bond, you need the exemption, you're borrowing, going to be borrowing the money soon to execute that, this has a longer term play out, and you do have other funding sources, hopefully that'll be coming into play, so the full impact of this, you know, I would be optimistic that we could cover it with our identified funding sources, you know, we might not be able to cover the full 130 million, but five million, we could probably cover, if you do a 1% WIF and we sequester the short-term rental tax and the other things that we've identified, so you could do without the vote, but you'd still need a town meeting vote.
Yeah.
But not an exemption vote on the ballot. Gets to be a lot.
It is, I mean, once the school's funded, I think our main focus at that point in time will transition solely to wastewater, I mean, in terms of our next, that's our next...
And I think, Dan, in your memo, I think you mentioned that there was a negligible amount of debt drop-off this year, but next year was in the order of 300,000?
300,000 change, yeah.
That's something to keep in mind, too, technical override, to reallocate them or repurpose that money.
That debt drop-off occurred in FY '21, and so presumably if you're trying to match things up, that would go against new debt that would be coming on in the next year of the DPW.
Put one block into the other.
Yeah, it's still another item that has to be on a ballot, whether it's a quote-unquote "technical override" or not, it has to be voted on.
Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't need to reauthorize it, so in other words, if, just for a nice round number, if you had a million dollars of new exempt debt coming on for the DPW facility, and you had exempt debt of $331,000 dropping off, it just drops off, your tax levy goes down by that amount, and you've increased your tax levy by the amount of the million dollars for the DPW, there's no action needed, and that of that is what you're getting, hitting your tax rate on.
But if we wanted to repurpose the debt drop-off, similar to what we did for the $1.1 million in road money that we did a number of years ago, you do need...
Right.
I know there's a town meeting vote, I don't know if there was a ballot question.
Yep.
Was there?
Yeah, it has to be, yeah.
The selling point is that there's no, there's no change to the tax rate.
But it needs, at town meeting, it would require two-thirds, right?
I'm not sure about that.
Pretty sure.
You do for a...
Essentially an override.
Do for a bond, but the...
Essentially an override, and I'm betting it would require two-thirds at town meeting
I think you're right.
Majority at the ballot.
I think you're right.
So we have plenty of time, you know, it'll go kind of fast, we'll know a little bit more, like I said, in the next couple of weeks on some of these things, and we'll update you at the January 7th meeting.
Okay, does anybody have anything else we want to talk about on the article review? Dan?
So the budget?
Before you start, I have a question that I'm sure will come up. Are we just going to be doing the expense side and not the revenue side?
No, it's revenue.
You're going to be talking about revenue tonight?
It's an overview at this point, yeah.
Okay, good.
And everybody, over the course of the coming months, will be in front of you to discuss their individual items.
Okay.
But we're going to, this is the overview.
Okay.
I want to thank Rich for his yeoman's work in this, there's a lot of moving parts, and I think in this particular case, as you go through it, there were some adjustments we made that are good for accounting transparency, but also timely, in the event that the economy is in pretty good condition right now, so some of the short-term maneuvers that were done some years ago have been significantly corrected in this budget, because the revenues were sufficient such that we could do that. Rich, you have the, oh, you got it, okay, so everybody should have the presentation in front of them, you got the memo from yesterday, thank you, Rich. So we start with this effort with the budget policy memo that comes out, and on the operating budget, we hit the key elements of the policy, it's A, it's balanced, we allow for contractual wages, and we're in negotiations also, continued with at least one group, has not settled, and we have another couple of groups for negotiation this upcoming year, so there'll be an article for future contract settlements, we provide up to 2.5% for education, that of course, like in every year, is always kind of the wild card, I don't have a number yet, but I understand our enrollment from Yarmouth at Cape Tech is up, they also had contract settlements there, that'll be reflected in their budget as well, and I don't believe that we have a settlement yet out of the DY teachers group yet, so I'm not sure what to expect there, we included 1.5 million and just a little bit extra for routine capital under the levy, and also the road maintenance program, with the exception of costs, some cost pressures that were identified, particularly in the area of like software licensing and contractual obligations, we would consider this a level service budget. We, Rich had touched on the idea that there had been a number of salaries from previous years that were funded from enterprise or revenue generating accounts, we've moved as many as we could to the levy, we'll point that out to you, and then made the charge back, back to those funds, and we also establish wastewater funding, some funding source options for you, provide for the OPEB payment as well, and new priorities that have occurred, one of the common themes, I think, particularly in the last year or so, has been communications and cable TV operations and what the TV looks like in the future, and as you know, we're engaging Comcast in a new contract cycle, and what media looks like, and what's referred to as PEG access, public educational governmental program could change dramatically, we wanted to be able to give you some options to consider as it relates to the media program, also new in there is the weights and measure assessment, you had a presentation by the Barnstable Weights and Measures team, and so that's afforded for going forward in the budget as well. Actually, I've got to break out the presentation myself, it's a little hard for me to see.
See that?
Yeah, I can't quite see all that.
I could comment on this one, Dan.
Yeah, go ahead.
This just demonstrates, this is kind of the high-level overview, this is referred to as the budget summary, not only do we show, this is the first page where we show not only what we're expecting to appropriate, but also how we pay for it, the funding sources, and so further on in the presentation, there's more detail on some of these funding sources, but total of FY '21 is projected to be 86,321,000 of appropriations, funded by 86,321,000 of funding sources, required to have a balanced budget, obviously the biggest component of that is our property tax levy, and that has to fall within the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, but to the extent there's additions that Dan's going to go through, the vast majority of those have been funded by increases in local receipts, and you'll see the detail on that later on, and one of the discussion points when you get to that slide is, those local receipts have been, in order to accomplish everything we've accomplished in this budget, and to start the discussion on some of the issues we've been talking about with regard to local receipts, the budget is at 96% of the prior year actuals is where our FY '21 local receipt budget is, in addition, you see down there, other available funds, there's a slide that shows you the detail on that as well, that's where you'll see an increase, for example, in the, I forget the exact numbers, Norm, but the increase in the allocation to the water fund, so the extent salaries that were previously charged in the water fund are now more appropriately charged in a public works budget, for example, we've offset them by increasing our allocation, because they're no longer in the water fund, we can increase our allocation, and we're more consistent now with how the Department of Revenue, you know, would like us to prepare, and actually, we're quite a bit below what we could be charging them based on the DOR guidelines, so we still have some movement on that as well, but in any event, this one slide just wants, just wanted to demonstrate that we have a balanced budget, as we always do, and that falls within the confines of Proposition Two and a Half, which is on the next slide, it shows you the calculation, our prior levy, our one and a half, or two and a half percent increase, and our projected estimated new growth for the year, gives us a levy capacity of 63.4 million, but then we add in our debt exclusions, which includes Cape Cod Tech, brings us to, adds another 2.4 million, for a total levy of 65.8 million dollars, and we've pretty much accounted for all of that through this budget process, and we would have excess levy capacity of about $21,000. Go ahead, just, oh, I'll wrap it up on this final slide, the next slide, if we were to do that, I caution you, I always hesitate to do things like this, because then someone will come back and say, well, you told me X, and so I'm giving out the caution flags here, is this is not going to be the tax rate, because I know the values are going to change, we suspect the values are going to increase, which might result in a lower tax rate, but, you know, also, we don't know exactly what's going to happen with school assessments and state assessments and other things, so there's a little, some moving parts that still need to be determined, but based on what we do know as of now, and based on the 65.8 million dollars of levy capacity used, and our values as they were in the prior year, our projected tax rate would be $10.24, which would be an average single-family home tax bill of about 3,900 bucks, and that final column there, we don't have the data for last year's rate, because not everybody's set a tax rate yet, Yarmouth is either the first or second in the state to do so, not everybody gives us timely, historically speaking, we rank as the, back in 2002, as the 54th lowest average tax burden, and in the last recorded data, the 71st lowest tax burden, which puts you in the top 20% of, lowest 20% of tax burden in the state.
I think it's interesting to note the impacts of the 2007, 2008 economy, across the Commonwealth, values have not come back many, many, many years after that event, that just kind of gives you an indication of how significant the devaluation of property was for that time, and now, it's still going to be a few more years before it reaches that point, if everything stays as strong as it's been now, which is kind of a historic situation since the Great Depression in the state, that has taken so long to even recover, so still some rise in movement there needed to get to us to be forward, the levels of where we were at before.
Does that total value include commercial and residential?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think, to the point you're...
Go ahead, take that.
It was in the book.
To the point you're making with regard to the values, I think the residential has come back considerably more, whereas the commercial has not.
The commercial across the state, except for in some very distinct locations, has been suppressed for a very long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, I had mentioned before, the assessments from the school districts are an unknown at this point in time, health insurance rate is not been determined yet, we did factor in for general insurance, we, you know, we're seeing increases there on the premiums, we typically have, since I've been here, added 10% to the line for that, and then the state and county, the retirement assessments are up as well, and then there's the debt service for the future for the two additional significant projects, DPW, Matakis project.
I do have a question about that reallocation, it indicates in the footnote there that there's about $250,000, that we're allocating out about $250,000 less than the DOR, I don't want to say the requirements, but DOR suggestions, why, why are we, why are we allocating less out, I mean, that's an opportunity...
Want to wait till we get to that slide and...
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, and the next slide gives you some specific drivers of the budget increases and the rough dollar value, or the dollar value and the rough percentage of that, so you see the pension assessment, health insurance, 10% increase anticipated, audit fees, that's the first time in many years, Rich, I think we've had a audit fee assessment?
Yep.
Yeah, so it's been a pretty cost-effective contract over the years.
And that's attributed to, we're doing a lot of grant applications and being successful in a lot of grant awards, so now, of course, we're so successful, we've exceeded the threshold for a federal, what's called a federal single audit, so essentially, it's not an increase in our audit fees, additional services we're required to have because we exceed federal grant thresholds, and I also speak to health and liability, that 10% increase, we do have some favorable news on our health insurance, our joint purchase group in which we participate has had some very good claims experience, and so very optimistic that we won't need that full 10% on the health insurance, and likewise, I wanted to point out, on the C and D is our largest, one of our largest increases, but that's anticipated to be offset by the fees generated from that service as well, so it's not hitting our tax rate per se.
Some additional movements we tried to make in the budget there had been some, what I would call expense items that didn't really, in the past, weren't able to fit within the levy, but they did occur usually as a free cash ask, or they sometimes were put in front of capital budget, one example of that is ammunition, ammunition in the past for the police department has been part of a free cash grant, so we have some availability to put that item into the levy, so that's, in some, there's some training associated, additional training with that, so that's a recurrent expense that we felt would be better addressed by being able to put it within the police department operating budget. There's also an additional, is it a technology assessment from the sheriff's department on communication?
The CED, the patching of the ambulance communications to the hospitals, sheriff's office has been increasing that assessment, and last year, the fire department had to kind of eat it within their overall budget, which kind of hurt them on a lot of operational issues, particularly vehicle maintenance and medical equipment replacement perhaps, but this fully funds the sheriff's assessment, it's been increasing over the last several
Yeah, what is, what are we at now, what's our total with that assessment, and what do we give, are there other options?
I don't know, I thought I saw the chief here, is there other options in the sheriff's department at this point?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Phil Simone, fire chief, unfortunately, no, he controls the patching to the hospitals right now, the future looks bright though, with our ImageTrend software, we're hoping to do electronic data transfer directly to the hospital, that may alleviate some of the patching on the lower priority calls, you still have to, if you need medical orders or need to talk to a physician, you need to get the physician to the line, so the patch is required on the higher priority calls, the priority, high priority two, almost a one, definitely on a priority one.
What's the total cost that we're paying for this service?
It's over 20, 22,000, I think, but it's going up, it's been continually going up, it was something that we never paid for in the past.
Is it based on call volume?
It is, it's a cost per patch to the hospital, so if we go just to an assist and pick someone up off the floor, and we're not going to do a transport, there's no patch to the hospital, so there's no fee for that, it's actual transports that we're basically making reservations to get a room at the hospital when we get there.
So I guess it just strikes me, because I remember years ago when he first started, when they first started adding...
It has relatively recent add, it was never funded, and now it's just getting to a point where it's too costly to continue to bear without increasing the budget.
Yes.
With all other expenses remaining equal, it's kind of hard to absorb an increasing cost like that.
So that...
Thank you.
We want you to thank you, Chief. We want you to thank you, Chief. So, you'll also see in paramedic certifications, as a, for instance, the chief explained to us that as his budget for expenses had been set and not accommodated, as increases in these items were passed on to the department, they were robbing from one event to not pay for that, to continue to pay these particular bills. So again, we felt it was better, because these are expenses that are growing, we put them in the budget now, so that they're fully accounted for, and some of the things that the fire department wasn't getting to, they can now get to. I do know, because the chief made me aware of it recently, that there is a, about, I think it's about a ten thousand dollar need for, I think, is it dive suits, chief? That came to me very late information. We didn't presently allocate for that. It is important to point out that we did ask the chief to generate the excess revenue from the ambulance account. We've watched the ambulance account trends very favorably, and the revenue forecast has been favorable. So, I said to the chief, as we go down through this process, if it's something that it looks like you definitely need to have an upgrade on those suits, we can consider that and put it in front of the board at a later date, but that was new information that came to me just the other day.
But that wouldn't be suits we'd put in a, that's not an every-year...
Well, so actually, the chief gave me a pretty good rundown of how, how we do PPE, personal protective equipment, as it relates to rotating and out, much like what was explained with the water department, these suits have a particular life expectancy between bottles and turnout gear and all that other stuff, that he's changing these out on a pretty regular basis, so having some...
Are these your turnout gear, or are we...
Well, it's PPE in general, if you just talked to, about fire department, personal protective equipment, and lined that up, it's a very costly line item, I don't know if you wanted to further explain that.
Yeah, the thing that we, we analyzed within our department is cold water rescue suits. So there's, there's two different things. Like a survival suit, like a fishing boat would have, we have several of those on the apparatus, so if we do have a cold water emergency, or if the guys are on the vessels going on a water emergency, they have that survival suits on. There's also the dive suits, which are dry suits for scuba diving, for either rescue or recovery. Those have a certain shelf life. The, the, the cold water suits, we tested all of them, several of them cannot be repaired, they're, they're twenty years old, some of them, and the zippers are no longer sealing, so the members are getting the cold water inside the suit now, so it's not really effective. So we have to not use those anymore. So we're looking to replace several of those and station those on the apparatus, that, the ambulances carry them, the engines carry them, because you never know who's going to show up, like in the ponds or in the, in the river, who's going to be first in. So we carry them on several pieces of apparatus.
So this issue, a higher level issue is, this was a capital budget request, and they didn't fund it, and I'll be talking with the chiefs as to how we might be able to accomplish that otherwise, but on the high level, the issue that the cap, you'll hear from the capital budget committee when they make an update to you, is not unlike this issue, there's lots of items that have a ongoing recurring replacement program that might not really fall into the purview of a, of a true capital item, or at least how they want to consider it. And so, how do you fund those things if it's not in the operating budget and it's not in the capital budget? It is a conundrum, so, that's the same issue for lots of departments.
Thank you, Chief. So that's the information. Also, IT licensing continues to be the challenge as well, the licenses to operate, the software associated with that. Rich will have more detailed plan on that when he comes in front of you. And also a new charge, I believe, if I recall correctly, the cost of the internet service, the R-WAN has been passed on to the towns now, is that...
The county discontinued paying for the services.
Systems. So altogether, when you added up all those items, it was just over a million dollars.
Huh, it's funny, because last year, they were here asking what they could do for us.
I don't think you're going to hear that a lot, that much anymore.
Huh.
I mean, these are just notable items in the...
These are notable drivers, yeah. Well, you know, so to Rich's point, since, you know, the town, the departments have been, on the expense side, pretty level funded over the years, so these, these items continued, particularly, some of them, like the, they were very creative in how they paid for them, but it was now at the time, we felt that, you know, instead of going to a free cash ask, if these are truly recurring items, they should be reflected in the operating budget going forward.
I think the board has, has pretty much supported that approach in, you know, the last couple of years, right.
Yeah, I mean, with the school situation being what it was, it was, every year was a problem, and it could still be, I don't know, but, but we have time now. So some other, these are budget additions for items previously funded by non-recurring sources, typically, free cash makes up some of those things. We've had a very good success with the intern program. Health Department recently has received a health intern for a number of months now to try to catch up on their backlog. We've used them in administration, we find that to be a very effective way to get projects cleared. I think last year, you had some good presentations from Conservation with the work that they did there as well. So we're looking to get some addition, or to maintain the level of funding for that. There's also wetlands funds for the, for the Conservation Department Administrative Support, gets channeled back into community development. The transportation program that was previously funded for senior services is now worked into their budget, because it's been very successful, and we thought that as a recurrent expense, it would be a better thing to do, to put that as part of the budget. The other item is the tree program, trees do not go away, they continue to, to have problems for us, so we wanted to make sure that we have an adequate supply of money available for that as well.
Are we talking about trees in parks, or is it playgrounds and...
Any tree that we own anywhere, you know, the cost of trees on town-owned property is pretty significant. The tornado didn't do enough to landscape enough of the town. And the also, the human services program has been very popular, Bruce Murphy's done some very good things with that program, so we wanted to, he had an additional ask for ten thousand more dollars associated with that, so, as you know, because we have, we had that nice presentation on social services in town, we have to be very creative on how to cast that safety net for our most vulnerable people in town, and Bruce has put together pretty good patchwork, but it does cost some money to be able to do that. And also, some seasonal wages associated with the cemetery operation. Rich, I might turn this slide over, you had a lot to do with this one.
So this goes to Norm's earlier question, various salaries that are truly operating in nature really ought to be in our general fund operating budget, and years past have been allocated to enterprise-type operations to fund them, and we have the opportunity now to provide for them within our budget, because we can increase our local receipts and our other financing sources, including that transfer of indirect costs. And so, it felt like was a good opportunity to do that, and this, this kind of allocate, or highlights how these had been allocated in the past. So, salaries for the facilities department were paid out of the water fund, salaries for IT operations were a little bit out of water, a little bit out of septicage, engineering salaries were out of roadway management articles, and recreation salaries were paid out of, what we call our offset fund. Total of all those reallocated salaries brought back into the general fund budget is two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. If we reduce our offset, the amounts we charge to our offset, so that's sixty thousand dollars of it, increase our indirect cost allocations to the enterprise funds, because we're no longer charging salaries there directly, by about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, that means there's sixty-four thousand dollars net added to the net tax allocation, so it's covered by our increase in local receipts.
Why, why didn't we simply zero that out? I mean, to really, the hundred and thirty-six thousand is really, since there's, there's room between what the DOR is saying, I mean, the way this is being done, we're adding sixty-four thousand dollars, whether, whether it's covered by local receipts or whether it's covered by taxes, it all comes out of the same pot.
That's true.
I mean, you know, the, the sixty-four thousand dollars allocated out to water and/or septicage, or golf, I guess there's none in, and golf isn't in this equation, but, or recreation, I guess, to some degree. You know, I, I don't know why, for example, on, on recreation, why doesn't the, why don't the salaries balance out? You know, we're, we're saying we, we have a net eleven thousand, eleven thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollar hit to our, our tax levy as a result of not balancing out those two numbers.
We could certainly readjust this to make this balance out, if that's the direction or the desire of the board. It's simply a function of, we had to put together a balanced budget, and so I kind of maxed out the, analyzing the local receipts, what's the maximum that I think we could possibly do look like, and that's where we're at. You know, obviously, if we could bring that down, that makes it more comfortable for everybody that's got to manage a budget and worry about the finances of the town, but, you know, it's a discretion of the board, of course, but, you know, ninety-six percent of your prior year actuals as a budgeted local receipt is, is a tight position.
I mean, where that ultimately would, would balance out, Rich, would be up where you talked about the remaining levy, and instead of it being, I don't know, was it fifteen to twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand.
It would be eighty thousand.
Right, that's right.
Right. And, and then, you know, if push came to shove on, on, on other areas, we, at least we wouldn't have to keep looking at all the details to figure out where to, where to get the, the funds.
New, so, some new programs added to the budget. One of the things that we're mindful of going forward in the communications contract with Comcast is, A, I think it's probably fair to say, nobody on the board has been happy with the product that we have, the outcome, mindful of that we have the, the best camera operators this side of the Mississippi, no question about it. But the, the technology, it leads a lot to be desired, and the, across the country, the FCC, tacit approval, if you will, for these legacy cable contractors to begin their process of de-investing out of the towns from TV programming, and that does cause a significant issue for us, because the entire TV operation does generate franchise fee revenue from TV program, which will have some for a number of years going forward, that's true, but as people begin to cut loose from traditional TV programming, we lose the franchise fee. So one of the things that we thought would be smart in the budget is to begin weaning ourselves off the franchise fee in increments over the coming years, to anticipate a day in which more TV is going to be live streamed to the internet than is to traditional TV means. So that being said, that does challenge, you know, I know the Cape Cod Media Center would be... Them right now, but something like that would be an endangered species going forward, because they are supported generally by the franchise fee. So, what we'd like to be able to do, based on what we've heard from the board, is develop our own organic ability to control, if you will, the future of what town communications look like, as opposed to being reliant on the franchise fee, and it starts with being able to have a dedicated human resource associated with communication, and that's reflected here in a potential media and communication support person that would coordinate all of the new modern ways in which we presently communicate, as like, it could be social media, the YouTube platform, all of these things are going to become much more an important part of our future, as opposed to Channel Eighteen programming. And so we've proposed that, it's something that we don't presently have any labor allocation for, the technical resource for that right now, so it would be a new position.
Where did you get that figure from? That's, to me, is an outrageous dollar amount, I mean, we don't even pay our new firefighters that, that's embarrassing.
Probably is a high number for just a pure salary number, but kind of baked into that would be any benefits that would come along with it.
We had like forty-seven percent to benefit.
It's a big number, yeah.
How much?
We usually use forty percent.
Forty?
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, I think that we should consider a contract...
Yeah, I, I, I kind of agree with Tracy, I think, you know, first step might be to, to see if we can contract out that service, and, and look for expertise that, you know, and then see how that goes, and, you know, if we find that we really need a full-time resource, then do that, but, but I think first step would be a contractual approach, and, you know, save some of the benefits and, and use those to more effectively get contractual services.
That's certainly an approach we could look at, but just to offer a little bit more in the way of context with this, there's a little bit more to it than just this particular year's request. As you know, we're undergoing our cable contract renegotiation now, and so we need to see how that shakes out, but what isn't, escaped us in our discussions of this is ultimately, with a new renegotiated contract and some certainty as to what we're beginning out of that contract, both capital and operating monies, perhaps that's the opportunity at that time to, if the board wants to take this direction, to create a cable, either an enterprise fund or revolving fund with those, and dedicated to that, it's been a, something that's been expressed by this board in the past, and that might be something we could do once we settle this contract. Right now, we do get capital monies, and those capital monies is what is used, right, wrong, and different, to pay for our camera operators, and that's what that second piece of this is, to fund our camera operators by putting them in the operating budget. And ultimately, if we did move to a different model of operating our Channel Eighteen and media operation, either through an enterprise or some other fund, that would shift over to that as well.
Yeah, I, if I can just comment on that, I think that would be a smart move to do that. Other towns are taking their Comcast revenues, their licensing revenues that are, that are available for the town, for the municipality, to run the government channels, both the education channel and the government channel, towns are putting them in a pot, and then drawing from those dollars to underwrite the cost. In some cases, the towns are hiring staff, Dennis has staff, Orleans has staff, Brewster has staff, Falmouth has a fairly well-endowed and robust program, so what I think, and I applaud this effort, what we're trying to do is catch up, essentially, with everybody else, and I don't object to having an option, but I don't think we should exclude, at least from consideration, having a staff position where you have the talent to do this. This is, this is, from my point of view, this is one of my biggest frustrations, this town does a lot of good stuff, and with changes in the press, changes in media, with reduction in local reporters, we need to work a little bit harder in getting all the good work that we're doing out. So that requires doing this, we're not alone, we're just trying to, I, I think this is an initial effort, we're catching up. The amount of revenue that we're getting from Comcast is more than adequate to cover these numbers.
And to that point, just to point out a couple of things, and I do put that down there, when I was contemplating this with Dan, that ninety-one thousand dollars is contemplated to be funded by an increase in Comcast license fees, but when you get to our local receipt slide, you notice that ends up not actually being the case. To Dan's other point, is if this is a declining revenue source, or if we have an inclination to want to put it somewhere else, we can't very well be adding to it, and so, under my, you know, similar premise, Norm, as with the indirect cost allocations, it fit within our increases in local receipts other than the Comcast fees, and so, if I didn't need to increase the Comcast fees in the budget, I'd rather not, understanding that we're trying to wean ourselves... Certainly would be an option to adjust as you go through under you this budget.
I just think on a contractual level, we could get deliverables, have somebody actually do an analysis of what our needs are, what programming we might want to do before, I mean, once we develop, I think, I think to Mark's point, the initial getting it up and running and developing the programming is probably one expertise that we may not need, we may need a different expertise after that's done. So I think... So I think starting off with a contract and getting all the information we need to develop a plan that may or may not need a full-time employee to run is something, I'm just not, I just don't know what they would do.
So I did, got a lot of advice from a lot of people. And so I took their advice seriously and visited the towns of Chatham, Dennis, Harwich, Brewster, Falmouth, and Barnstable, and looked at all the things that they're doing. And they have great operations and do a good job, and they have, but they all had a couple of things in common, great equipment that was modern and up-to-date, and either two or three people on staff to do it all, dedicated to just that function. And so, you know, point taken, anytime you're adding a new position, we got to figure out what's the plan to integrate that person into the operation, what are they actually going to do? So that's a key part of this. We would, you know, we haven't yet gone down the road of developing the job description and getting that through a personnel board, because obviously, we want to know that there'd be some sort of blessing to move forward on this. And to Second Post's point, there was a one-time free cash request of thirty thousand dollars as part of this presentation on this, and that would be to get some outside help probably from some of our colleagues in the other towns that are already doing this, to jumpstart the program and give us some direction.
I'm in favor of putting money into a budget that supports
This is all good.
... media and programming. I'm just not so sure that hiring one person to do it is, I mean, we may need to spend the money one way one year and differently the other year, is all I'm saying. I support doing it, I just think that we have to be careful how we, if we actually hire somebody to do it initially.
I can talk with our town administrator, and there is more than one way to approach this. So to your point, I can give you some options on that.
You know, it's interesting that we talk about being behind, so last week, Falmouth kicked off their effort to bring fiber to the town, to the home. So they're looking to kick Comcast out altogether and do live streaming as some type of service, yet to be determined as to who would operate it, but there's, that model is presently being done in a lot of communities across, over the canal, and essentially, what they're doing, what the communities themselves have decided to do, is get into the business of the fiber to the home such that they can use that as a utility to generate income. And what the compensation that took place in Falmouth was related to price controlling, if you will. So they felt that based on the studies that they've done to date, that the best way to ensure that everybody within the community has high-speed internet access at a cost-effective rate, the best thing we ought to take a look at is how can you do that as a public utility? And there's a model, many models across the Commonwealth on that topic. So that's kind of like, I would say that they're right now way ahead of everybody having that conversation. And then there's a number of towns that Richard just highlighted that have some pretty robust communications programs in place, and then where we're at right now. So it is a multi-year strategy we're going to need to come up to speed, and, you know, when I think of the type of communication, I know Mark and I have discussed this before, with the erosion of local media, nobody's covering that much, these meetings across all towns in America now, the local media's typically not what it used to be, the only way to get a message out there is if we don't generate, you know, and how do we most effectively do that with all that's in front of us over the next eighteen to twenty-four months? So if you, you know, like, as we go through the budget process, we certainly can revisit this particular topic and give you some additional information as to what it is that we found out. But one way or the other, we'd like to be able to put some resources towards whether it's an outsourced or an employee to really begin getting this process moving.
Very good.
Additionally, you'll hear probably from the Health Department that the burden on their staff due to the amount of new rentals that have come online is pretty significant. So I've allocated, because again, we don't have the full impact yet known on that, I've allocated in this proposed budget a part-time position for the Health Department. And I, you know, it would be too soon to say for sure, right now, with, they're already a full staff position down and have had to add some ongoing staff support from an intern, but there's clearly an uptick in business in front of the Health Department from this new law. So whether it's a part-time or a full-time in the future, I'm not really sure yet, I think it's too soon to say, but I didn't want to, I wanted to kind of put a toe into the water with a part-time staffer to see if we can at least stay up to speed on that. And then there's the information on the Waits and Measures program that you had previously had a presentation on. In wastewater, Rich, I'll turn this over to you, this is...
Can I raise a question back on the, you know, the new programs, the part-time rental program inspector? Are we recharging fees for those inspections? So will there be an offset on that then?
I think what you'll find is that the, I've asked the Director of Health to provide the latest uptick in what the fee generation is, it's pretty significant.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't read the last sentence. Okay, now I see.
I just, before you make a commitment to a full-time resource, you know, it's, I didn't really want to get into a full-time commitment without having the full-known quantity of what the impact of the...
Following the discussion you've heard in the past on various funding streams and funding sources, this is what this page represents. This manifests itself in several areas of the budget and requires a couple of different articles at town meeting to put into place as well, so it's not straightforward, but I want to consolidate it all in one spot for you. The most impactful thing as far as, you know, tax levy considerations, is there is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars set out of the net tax levy going into our waste, all these items would be going into a wastewater reserve, which is our temporary holding spot, not to get too technical, but as you recall our operating budget, we've got our general fund operating budget, it's usually the second article, and then our enterprise funds follow, and one of our enterprise funds being the Septage Enterprise adopts a budget. Until such time as we actually have a consolidated water resource enterprise fund, which doesn't occur till later, later in the town meeting agenda, you don't have one. And so the consideration here is, what do you do until you actually have that? Because all the budgetary articles fall before you have that. And so the holding place would be the Septage Enterprise Fund Capital Reserve. And then part of my challenge, working with town council, would be then to craft an article that when we adopt a water resource enterprise fund, if we were to do that, that all the balances of those enterprise funds that are going to be consolidated go into that new fund.
Why wouldn't you just put that article first? I mean, there's nothing that says that the other article has to be first.
No, well, I guess the concern is, what if somebody says no, and then you presented a whole budget that now needs to go somewhere? Do you need backup articles to accomplish that? But in any event, our draft funding plan from the Water Resource Advisory Committee was looking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's offset by savings in our energy budget, which you don't see a direct, you won't see a direct reduction of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but what you will see is no increase. And if we move forward with our fifty workshop road, the anticipated savings is in the order of magnitude of a couple hundred thousand dollars, and the savings from the fire stations, I think was in the seventy-five thousand dollar range, both which would be in place for FY twenty-one. And so we did not increase our energy budget, but nor did we decrease it, just to be conservative, but that certainly could be something we could adjust as we move forward. Also within the tax levy is a five hundred thousand dollar commitment to our wastewater reserve, except that's funded by the estimate of new short-term rental receipts. And this one gets a little complicated as well. ... dollars if we don't get five hundred thousand dollars of revenue. And so the idea being, it would be a contingent appropriation, five hundred thousand dollars appropriation, as long as you receive that much in new revenue from short-term rentals. If you only received four hundred thousand, for example, then you'd only transfer four hundred thousand dollars into your wastewater reserve.
So it kind of be an up to five hundred?
That's what we're hoping to accomplish, right? And so we think that we, we're hopeful that we'll get that five hundred thousand dollar target, and that's what we've been working on for a while now, and so I'd like to move forward on that. But on the other hand, protect ourselves against the possibility that you don't achieve that exact target, without impacting other town services and otherwise impacting the tax rate. In our free cash, which is a separate slide, free cash requests, there's also one-time funding source of five hundred thousand. And also, our Septage Enterprise Fund retained earnings, which are currently available, we'd like to tap that to pre-fund our wastewater program and put that into our wastewater reserve. So all told, we got one point six million dollars of funding going into our wastewater reserve in this year, and then we can revisit these sources again for future years, if to the extent they're available. But as Jeff Colby will tell you, and Ed Centeau, when we get into the Septage Plant Budget details, we're under some significant pressures from there that were not necessarily unexpected, but maybe not expected as soon as they are hitting, and that has to do with the cost of sludge disposal for various reasons. And so we got to be careful about how much we're hitting that Septage Enterprise Fund retained earnings, but we think we can do this amount in this year.
So going on to the next slide, OPEB obligations have ticked up after the last actuary that had been done. You can see the numbers for FY twenty and FY twenty-one, and the generation of revenue going towards that liability from the different sources.
Why did the unfunded liability increase by three million? Has it dropped by, what, fifteen to twenty million?
I think Ed could probably speak to the specifics on that better than us.
Because that has a significant impact on our contribution requirement.
Yes, we had a number of retirements and then replacements. As you know, we also increased our fire department staff, hired an HR director and some other positions, so our net positions are up from where they were in previous years.
I'd also add that its actual study's done every other year, so there's a two-year difference, so it's not all captured because of a one-year change. But also, in the last one prior to this, I think we identify, we were the beneficiaries of planned design changes which contributed to a reduction. So the cost of our health insurance plans went down on an actual basis. So we went from a, and I, approximate numbers, I think we went down from about twenty-eight million to that eighteen million, and Ed, you might know that better than I do off the top of your head. But we did have a significant reduction, but that was largely attributed to planned design changes, and so that one-time reduction's been baked in, and now we're seeing the cost inflation of medical spending.
The reason why it dropped so much was because we committed to fully funding the ARC, and that was the significant change.
The funding of the OPEB did take the opportunity to increase it slightly from the water fund, didn't change anything from the golf fund, and our fees, we had not increased fees for inspectional services for a number of years, but last time we did, baked into that calculation of costs, the cost base that we were raising fees for included these amounts for OPEB recovery. So to the extent we were to revisit fees in the future, we could also increase that contribution from those fees in that regard. But right now, we are relying on a significant free cash funding source to fund OPEB, but at a higher rate than what we funded it last year.
And the next slide is ongoing funding of reserves. So you have some on FY twenty and FY twenty-one comparison, the contributions to the different funds that would be available.
I guess this is an area where the selectmen would have some degree of discretion, depending on how you'd like to approach it, but at the moment, we have it, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars going into the stabilization funds. This is a combination of capital and unrestricted. It's a hundred thousand going into unrestricted and two fifty going into capital. And so the balance, after you were to do that, is about four point four million in unrestricted, about one point five million in the capital stabilization, so just under six million dollars total stabilization fund. We also have five million dollars in unreserved fund balance, which is considered reserved. And so if you compare that to our general fund expenditures, which is our, kind of the S and P consideration that's applied, that's on the right side of this slide. Of course, it's a moving target, as your expenditures get higher, a percentage of those expenditures becomes a bigger number. And so our target at two months, our sixteen point six percent of those expenditures, went up from about thirteen million to thirteen point four million, and our reserves are at just under eleven million, and so we're about eighty-two percent of our target, our desired target.
And we lost ground.
What is the, the general fund unreserved, or the, yeah, unreserved fund balance of five million, is that a, that's a month-end, year-end number?
It's a year-end June thirtieth number that gets audited.
All right. Is there a consistent floating balance that is as substantial as that, or is that a, is that a timing issue? Or, I mean, we don't have five million bucks sitting around.
No, I guess the easiest way to explain that, or, I don't know, none of it's easy, I guess, but one way to explain it would be perhaps a measure of free cash. The starting point, the calculation of free cash, is that unreserved fund balance. And the department revenue will add or subtract various items against it, based on their policies of what they will allow you to spend. So, but that's where you start your calculation of free cash, is that unreserved fund balance. So if our free cash is, last year was three point four million, it started with that five million dollars of unreserved fund balance. They're not exactly one in the same, but they're related.
I understand. So...
If I may, going back to one of our first slides, we presented a balanced budget, revenues equal our expenditures. So if we came in exactly as planned, there'd be no addition to our unreserved fund balance. So what adds to free cash? It's the same things that adds to our fund balance, saving, additional receipts on revenues, savings on appropriations, and, you know, other stuff that happens, property tax, savings, and transfers.
And my question really is, what is the, do we have those funds invested continually for, to earn interest?
They are, and when you look at the local receipts, you'll see we've been very successful in investing idle cash balances. Our treasurer's done a great job. When we get to that page, I'll indicate that specifically, because that's dramatic.
Okay, thank you.
As a measure, a final point on this slide is a measure of performance, as Ed Centeau, our finance director, has indicated to you in the past, the one area where we are not rated very strong by the S and P in our financial management score has to do with general fund return. I might be wrong in the exact description, but essentially, general fund return. And the, it's not as easy as this, but just for, it approximates this as a proxy, they're looking for general fund return of about five percent. And so a proxy for that is free cash. And so five percent of our operating expenses for FY twenty was three point eight million. We generated three point four million of free cash, and so we are at eighty-eight percent. We're pretty close, but still a little short of where we'd like to be on free cash generation. This kind of brings everything full circle, in a sense, you'll remember when I talked about the... You'll remember when I talked about the balanced budget, balanced on property tax, local receipts and state receipts and other funding sources. Our local receipts are 96% of actual. So if you want to generate free cash, you could generate more receipts over the one that you budgeted. But if you're at 96%, chances are you're not going to budget a whole lot more. And likewise, you could not spend appropriations and have savings on appropriations. But presumably, you're asking for those appropriations because you need them. And we wouldn't raise money if we didn't need it in the first place. And so it's the vicious cycle year-in.
So on the next slide's the expenditure budget summary. This is just a high level on the different departmental level budgets, as it turns out. And then, of course, the big departments will be in front of you at a later date as well to go over item by item within their departments. Year-over-year changes to local appropriations.
So these are the, and also the prior pages, these are the totals from each of those prior pages. So why did the budgets go up? Well, you'll recognize the big one, the contractual obligations of 1,029. That was, that was detailed on a prior page, as was the reallocation of salaries from enterprise funds, as was the new programs. But this also incorporates a couple other things. It highlights the 500,000, new short-term rental tax, plus 125 within the levy from the energy budgets, and 625,000 of wastewater funding. The 2.5% for education translates to $948,000. The increase in the, 2.5% increase in roadways is $60,000. The existing programs funded from one-time sources that we're trying to get into the budget was $147,000. All those things, plus contractual wage increases of about 2%, just under 2%, add up to the 3,300,000 of change that was on the prior page. So it kind of explains why we got from where we were to where we are in this budget.
On the next slide, non-property tax budget funding. This is, in this particular case, our excise receipts.
Where are we at in FY '20 now? We're, this, as far as budget to actuals, are we, we're halfway through?
About halfway.
And are we on target for all these?
You know, we are. The difficulty in that is the timing of, on some of these key receipts. You know, when does the commitment from the state come out for mode of equal excise, for example? I will have to get back to you because we do have.
I just meant generally, we're, I mean.
Generally, we're on target. But we do, and the board of selectmen does get, the third or fourth week of the month, the local receipt report indicates that information.
I just was with it in front of me with the 2021. I was trying to figure out, we were budgeting close.
Local receipt summary on the next slide.
A couple of things I just wanted to point out on this slide, Dan, where that, in that total excise, that 7.7 million for the FY '21 budget includes the 500,000 that we're anticipating for the new short-term rental. Also, you'll see here, down under investment income. Previously, we'd been budgeting about $100,000 for investment income. And clearly, we've been significantly outperforming that. It's upwards of half a million dollars of interest income through the efforts of the finance office and specifically the town treasurer. So we're budgeting that more appropriately at $450,000 this year. Now, one of the risks in that is you actually have to have cash on hand to invest and earn interest on to do that. And so, you know, if you're cash poor, this is an issue that's, when I'm back in my consulting and auditing days, would befall a couple of communities that are used to having capital projects or grant programs come in onboard. And then when all of a sudden those dried up, they weren't hitting those targets that they're used to hitting. So it's something we have to keep an eye on. And then at the bottom line, there's the cable franchise fees. You'll notice that we were collecting over half a million dollars in cable franchise fees. But we did not increase the budget, as Dan alluded to, just trying to wean ourselves off of that. But we did indicate with those new media funding that it could be funded by this franchise fee. We could increase that to cover that if we had to. The bottom line is at 16.75 million. Even with the 500,000 of new money, that's below our prior year actuals and should be able to achieve that. But it does represent, without the new short-term rentals, 96%, which is, is pretty tight.
And the last slide is other available fund summaries of.
So these are other funds. The ambulance fund, receipts fund being the largest of them. To the extent the fire department had additional needs, perhaps we could increase. This budget doesn't reflect increasing it from the 1.3 million that traditionally has been coming out of there. So that would be a source for additional funds if needed. One decrease is the wetlands protection fund cannot support the $20,000 annually that was coming out of that. So we reduced that down to five. And so you saw that differential on a previous page. And then to Norm's earlier question, enterprise fund indirect charges were $467,000 in the past. And because we removed direct charges, we've increased our allocation to 603. And if we did it based on a strict Dior guidelines, we could go up on that some additional funds as well.
Let me kind of interrupt for just a second. I do have one question back on the cable franchise fees. Because having just cut the cord with Comcast, I'm sympathetic to the situation. But, you know, Comcast continues to get substantial revenue from households for internet.
Doesn't go towards this.
Well, that's part of my point.
Yeah.
You know, I think we need probably to be in contact with our legislature about that in terms of, you know, what are, what are the alternate sources of revenue? Because, you know.
When you go, if you do a local utility under the municipal light plant law, what you would work out with the local community is a cost-share scenario. So that if your local community was giving you your fiber connection, whatever loss in revenue from the cable franchise fee for every household that cut the cord, the cost of the monthly internet connection that the fiber utility would charge out to that would be baked into that equation. So that's how those towns have, that have done fiber to the home, have, had allocated for that. Because, I mean, our number is 400,000, you know, and in some communities, it's significantly larger. And we don't, we don't even have, the fee isn't to the maximum franchise fee availability either. So it's a serious issue when people start cutting and you don't have any way of seeing it coming, you know? And if you weren't paying attention to it. So we've identified it as a real scenario that's going on in front of us. We're in negotiation now. But the cable companies will never relent on this topic. They.
Well, the cable companies also, to some degree, you know, have their hands in both pockets because they are, I think Comcast has an interest in Hulu, which is one of the streaming companies.
Streaming services.
And they may have others. So, you know, it's, they could say.
The whole TV model is changing right in front of us.
No question.
Yeah. So this was a, you know, we did, I think, a lot of effort in this budget to address for the long-term sustainability, things that had been in front of us over the years and worked them into the recurrent expense. One of the items that we didn't highlight, but it is in there, is the extended hours have been very popular at the library. So we have, because that had been a free cash ask last couple of years. So we've included that as part of the recurrent operating budget as well. And as the library team gets down the road on a feasibility study, it's, we're moving them towards getting them out of waiver status with the Mass Library Commission. So we continue to make strides there as well. But it's been very well received, so we kept it.
There's one more slide.
Oh, free cash uses. I think we had a handout in this. Was that a separate handout? Because I didn't have that as a slide.
It's on the back, it's on the back page.
Yeah, I don't have the same presentation you have.
So we did receive a number of requests.
Is there free cash in?
Thanks.
The very last one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess my, my only question really on this is the PD trailer, because that seems to me like it could be a capital item.
Amen.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is.
Same issue.
Let's see.
Well, we get four items on there for police department. And, and that's not the only one that, it's not just the police department. It's also EV and charging station expansion, media operations improvement. I don't know exactly what that is. But, but I, you know, to Tracy's point, we've got all these items that are not going through the normal capital appropriation process, which includes a review by the capital committee.
Well, they did. And so the PD trailer was a specific ask of the capital budget committee. And they'll update you on their thought process on that, on what they're recommending. They did recommend an amount out of their 1.5 million. And then through conversations with the chief and Dan, to some extent, thought, and the finance committee, thought that perhaps free cash for another piece of it. But regardless of the free cash and regardless of the allocation from the capital budget committee, it still doesn't fund the full request of $750,000. And so the chief can speak to this, Chief Frederickson, about the efforts that they plan on undertaking to make up that differential.
So this is part of the training?
The PD firearms trailer.
I see.
Okay, but there's no, okay, that's probably capital, all right.
And then some of these other items also were in front of the capital budget committee. And they declined funding because they had to make choices, because they don't, you know, didn't have sufficient to cover everything. But they recommended them for a free cash allocation. And so there's $120,000 of free cash asks recommended from the capital budget committee that are, you know, under consideration.
So they've gone through the full evaluation by the capital committee? Or is it just a, the capital committee said, we, we don't have money for those?
No, they were submissions to capital budget. And they couldn't fit them in the 1.5, but they wanted to support them. So recommended them for a free cash allocation.
Yeah, one of the things the committee's made clear to us in all over the years has been their desire to have the 1.5 cap expand. They're, they would like to see, because they do know there's a number of these items, like we just discussed before, that don't quite fit the capital cost necessarily. But some do. And they're saying that there's so many asks in front of them, they're just not being able to keep pace at 1.5 million. And they'll, when they come in front of you, they'll make that same case again, that they'd like to see some escalator for inflation on that cap.
The media operations, the 30,000, that's the same 30,000 that was on the slide of new monies.
So we thought that the budget accomplished a lot of things that have been commentated on over the last couple of years. And as we go through the process, we can certainly make refinements. And as the board sees fit, give us recommendations to instruct us as to how they want to proceed with it. But that's the starting point. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Mark.
I don't have any questions, any more questions. But I would like to just make an observation. I think this is a very, very strong overview on the budget and the town's finances. The thing that I'm very pleased about, in addition to some of the other things that we've already talked about, relate to stabilization, reserve. I think Yarmouth is in a very strong position to make another run at a AAA bond rating. And should the town be able to, this, this is my first reaction in looking at this, is that you're doing some things here that, you know, the, the bond markets are asking us to do. And that is to strengthen our reserves. And I think we're in a much better position now to make another run at a AAA bond rating, which could, in the long run, help the town significantly in terms of saving funds on interest. It could mean millions in terms of taxpayer dollars. So I think to some degree, I'd be interested in, in, in having, having that, having that conversation as well in terms of the timing, the strategy. We have a lot of projects coming up. But, I mean, this, this has been building up for years. As I said before in the last meeting, I think this board has worked very hard, certainly prior to my being here, in finding ways to save money, to build up, you know, reserves, to make improvements with OPEB and free cash. And I don't think you have that much further to go, just based on my review of what Standard and Poor's said last time. I think you're in a very strong position to make another run, and potentially a successful one, at trying to get a AAA bond rating, which could help the town immensely. So that, that's my reaction to this. So I commend you, Dan, and Rich, and Ed, for all the time and work that you put into this. I think this is, is an outstanding report.
Norm, any comments?
No, I agree with Mark on the, the bond issue and the bond rating issue. And I, it is a very complete presentation. I think, you know, revenues and tied together all the pieces. And sometimes going back a ways, we didn't always have all the pieces together at one reading. So I really appreciate seeing that. Doesn't change the picture any. I'd like to see a half a percent less in, in increase in taxes and would love to see that, that challenge addressed so that we'd be planning for a 2% increase as opposed to 2.4. And I don't say that facetiously. Our, our, you know, there's constant pressures on people in our community, financial pressures created by tax burden. And that increase to 10%, or $10 per thousand is significant. You know, I brought along my Kiplinger magazine from this last month, in which they talk about communities that are most tax-friendly, particularly retirees. And they talk about average taxes on residences. And the, the most appealing is Wyoming. I talked to my wife about moving to Rock Springs, but she was not very receptive, so. But there are other states talked about in here that we're all very familiar with. Florida is number eight on the list. And, you know, the interesting thing, you know, go, go back to Wyoming for a minute, is the average $400,000 house has a property tax bill of $2,500. That's not lost on people. And, you know, when you go to Florida and, you know, the $400,000 house is about $4,100 of real estate tax, but the state income tax is zero.
I don't think they have an estate tax either.
No estate tax either, that's right.
That's huge.
Whereas, it's huge. And, you know, we, we exist in an environment where people are more and more mobile, I think, in terms of their choices, particularly at retirement time, as to where they go. And, and I got to tell you, I've got friends that are the six-month-and-a-day residents in Florida. And I've got others that are considering that. And that doesn't affect their local taxes here. But it, but it does affect state income tax, which does impact us in the long run. So, you know, I say, say that with a challenge, that we, we really need to find ways, and I know there, there's multiple ways of getting there, but of getting that increase in taxes down from an annual amount of 2.5%. We need to get it down. And we need to get our overall tax rate down. It's not an easy challenge.
Tracy, any comments?
On that?
Anything. Anything having to do with the budget.
Anything about Wyoming you'd like to add?
Including, including, what's the name of that town, Norm?
Rock Springs is a beautiful.
Rock Springs. Rock Springs.
Some, some fairly high-level school debt that was coming into the picture, and I believe that there were actually some deficits in that presentation. Um, so, you know, this is, uh, this is, this is nice to see, you know, with all that we have coming up, um, you know, we, we look like we're in good shape. So thank you, Dan, for, for, for your hard work on that. And Rich. Uh, the other, my observation is that, um, kind of goes back to the, the creation of these positions. You know, in 2009, my first year on this board was probably the, the town, the year that the town was worst hit by the recession. And, um, we, we made lots of across-the-board budget cuts. Um, we eliminated positions. We didn't fill retirement, uh, retirements. Um, we combined positions and found efficiencies. So I get nervous when we start to talk about adding a lot of these things back, because, you know, we are going to have another 2009 eventually. Um, so I think Tracy's point about maybe contracting out some short-term labor to decide what it is that we really need, you know, is a good one. I, um, you know, we had the wastewater, the water and the wastewater superintendent tonight. I think that is going to be an important position, you know, because of the wastewater, um, issues that we're going to be facing in the near future. And I understand that, you know, by implementing the rental tax, we have kind of, uh, created our own mandate of, of inspector. So, you know, I'm sensitive to the need for those things, but I'm, I'm, I want to be cautious in the future about, um, creating positions, um, and taking on new salaries and, um, OPEB and other benefit commitments. So that's just an observation. Having been here in 2009 and having to, I had to make a lot of hard decisions, um, I think that was probably the worst year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, I agree with the comments of the other, um, board members. I, I think for a first go at the budget, it's, uh, a lot of thought was put into it. It's very, it's very complete. Um, there's a lot of variables that yet remain to be seen in how it's going to affect the numbers, but preliminarily, it looks reasonably optimistic, and hopefully will remain that way going forward. So thank you, Dan, for all your hard work in, in putting this together, and you as well, Rich. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. We don't have any board and committee actions today, do we, Mark?
Correct, we do not.
All right, individual items.
Did we already, did we already take care of the new school ballot?
We did. We're skipping that because we, we called it out of turn.
Okay.
So, individual items. Who wants to go first on that? Anyone?
I'll go. Um, last Friday, I attended the, uh, Rotary Breakfast, at which they gave an award to what they call their rising star. It was a high school senior who had exhibited exemplary achievement in both academics and his work-based learning. And that particular award happened to be given to my oldest son, Caleb, so...
Excellent.
Proud Dad moment?
That was, it's hard to find proud dad moments with teenage boys, let me tell you. So I'll take, I'll take him when I can get him.
No, that's terrific, Eric. That's terrific.
Congratulations.
I had a young man that I sponsored at Pope John that got that award, and he went on and graduated from Middlebury College, played football up there, and, um, was a pre-med major, and he's going to be going to medical school. So that's probably a good omen for your son. It's, it's kids that are tracked, um, in the right direction and show a lot of promise, so it's a great honor.
If I can get him to clean his room, I'll...
Babysit.
Hire someone to do that someday. Tracy?
Well, last night, as it was mentioned earlier in public comment, I attended the school committee meeting last night. Um, they did discuss the, um, what Kurt had also mentioned, that, uh, the lengthening of the time to be able to get started, put them back to the engineer's estimates, approximately about $5 million. So they'll go through the process now of, um, reconvening the building committee and going through those items and moving forward. Uh, the other thing that they talked about was, um, capital planning, uh, potentially going out for, um, doing a, uh, hiring consultant to do some capital planning for them. They had mentioned the, um, statement of interest with Mattie Keys. They also mentioned the, um, submission for, uh, about $2 million for roof repairs on Mattie, and, and, I'm sorry, Emmy Small, that was coming, and how that, that had been turned down in the past. And, um, so my comment really to them was that, um, you know, we can't look at these things in a silo. Our capital budget is, committee is very detail-oriented, and I, I don't believe that the last time they went, they had enough information to really act upon.
Mm-hmm.
So they need to do their due diligence. So I hope that they would go forward with a plan. But also, we can't look at that in a silo, because we really need to know what the overall school plan, um, is, uh, and making sure we're investing the money properly. So hopefully, when they come to us with that, they have all the information, which we weren't able to get before, uh, they moved forward with the Mattie Keys plan. Um, I think that's really about it from their meeting. But I just really want to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, celebrate safely and with, um, warmth, hopefully, and, uh, family and friends, and I just hope everybody has a great, great Christmas.
Norm? Thank you. Nothing specifics. It's, this is a great season, a lot of fun always, I think, and, uh, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Mark?
I echo those same comments. Good luck looking for real estate out in Wyoming. Norm?
We might be able to come up with a free cash.
Yeah, yeah. Share with me any good ideas.
I'm sorry I brought it up. You know, it's...
By the way, Norm, I'm very, I'm very interested. If you see anything good out there, I'll hire Eric to...
My wife will have changed the locks when I get home, so...
Be careful. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is our last meeting of the year, as I said, um, at the commencement of it. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and whatever tradition, um, that you celebrate.
Festivus.
And I hope that the New Year brings a lot of happiness and health to everyone. Thank you. Going to Town Administrator items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, a very good news item to pass on to you, as, uh, Mr. Colby had nearly caused me to have a heart attack over here, sneaking up behind me like that. Uh, he would like to apprise the board that we're planning to do an early February groundbreaking for the new DPW building. That's very exciting. Uh, it's a, a big, big effort that took quite a bit of planning, and, uh, that's something that we're all anxiously awaiting, that contractors should be mobilizing. Shortly after the first of the year, demolition will begin, and, and then in early February, the digging will be commenced, and we want to be able to celebrate that opportunity. So additionally, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that in the audience, Roby Whitehouse, our Superintendent of Sanitation, is here. She also was the key architect of a Division of Industrial Accidents Labor Grant of 20, about $25,000 to train up to 300 of our full and part-time staff on OSHA-related topics. So I wanted to let you know that that had come in due to her hard work on that, so that's greatly appreciated. And amongst many of his duties, quietly, Rich Bienvenue has marshaled up to, and I don't know the exact number, but some quarter million dollars' worth of energy conservation work that will begin very shortly in town. What's the total dollar value?
Uh, about $400,000.
About $400,000.
Grant work will cost the town about 50 grand.
So not only do we benefit from solar PV, but we will begin to, uh, experience the benefit of, uh, energy conservation measures that'll reduce our energy footprint, that reduces, uh, the total dollar value to some extent, because, as you know, energy constantly goes up. But, uh, that was a huge lift by Rich to get to that point. We're excited to get that work done, and a big bulk of it's going to be here in Town Hall.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask that we send a formal thank you to them for their work on those efforts that could...
Certainly can.
Be part of their record.
Yep, we certainly could take care of that.
I think we will, we would definitely do that.
And lastly, I'd like to thank the Legislative Delegation. We were notified earlier this week that the tornado reimbursement money will come, uh, for us. Uh, we'll get the exact dollar value we're in line for, but, uh, at the very late hour of the end of the year, they got that across the finish line, and I'm very thankful that we had no lives lost in that tornado of July 22nd. I think in retrospect, we had a very good year here in town. I want to thank the board for all your hard work in, uh, helping us accomplish our goals and your goals, and I look forward to a really robust 2020, so I wish you all a happy holiday season.
I think we'd be remiss also in not thanking our staff. You know, it always brings it up when Eric talks about the, the tough times, and, uh, our staff is remarkable in terms of what they accomplish on...
I remember those tough times. I deliberately waited until 2013 when I ran. Things were good then.
Tracy hit the nail on the head. Yep. We have a top-notch staff here. They, uh, continuously amaze me with their level of effort that they put in for the town on behalf of the townsfolk, and, uh, we could not be successful without them, and they do a great job.
Amen.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.